one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[104.88][110.56]-[S01] This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act.
I'll confirm that with Ms. Brock.[116.64][116.64]-[S03] Yes, ma'am, it was.[117.84][117.84]-[S01] I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.[120.96][122.56]-[S04] I will make that motion.[124.16][124.16]-[S03] A second.[125.28][125.28]-[S01] We have a motion by Councilman Passamit and a second by Councilman Brown. Any discussion?[131.04][131.60]-[S05] No.[132.40][132.40]-[S01] All in favor, by show of hands, to approve the agenda as published? Thank you. I think that was unanimous of those up here at the dais. At this time, we don't have anything for council member discussion, to my knowledge, and we have no public comment during caucus meetings. All right. Next is a list of items for executive session. I'd like to read through those before someone makes a motion. Under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, "To engage in discussions incident to employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, ...incident to employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body. discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body." This is the annual performance review of the county administrator and the clerk to counsel. This is the annual performance review of the county administrator and the clerk to counsel. Under Section Code, Section 30-40-70A2, Under Section Code, Section 30-40-70A2, "Legal advice related to the discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements "Legal advice related to the discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." Discussion of an application for development agreement related to 98 Jennings Road. Discussion of an application for development agreement related to 98 Jennings Road. C. Under South Carolina Section 30-4-70A2, C. Under South Carolina Section 30-4-70A2, "Legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements "Legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." Discussion of an application for the development agreement related to Pine Island Golf LLC. Discussion of an application for the development agreement related to Pine Island Golf LLC. D. Under Section Code, Section 30-4-70A2, D. Under Section Code, Section 30-4-70A2, "Legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim of other matters "Legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim of other matters covered by attorney-client privilege," settlement of legal claims covered by attorney-client privilege," settlement of legal claims or position of the county in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the county of a claim. or position of the county in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the county of a claim. This is a Medico contract with a detention center. This is a Medico contract with a detention center. E. Under Section Code, Section 30-4-70A2, E. Under Section Code, Section 30-4-70A2, "Legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements "Legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." Discussion of St. James Baptist Church relocation on Hilton Head Island. Discussion of St. James Baptist Church relocation on Hilton Head Island. And there may be matters to come out of executive session. And there may be matters to come out of executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?[277.20][278.00]-[S04] No movement.[278.88][278.88]-[S01] A motion by Councilman Passamit.[280.72][280.72]-[S06] A second.[281.36][281.36]-[S01] A second by Vice Chair Tavernick. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?[277.12][278.00]-[S04] No movement.[278.88][278.88]-[S01] A motion by Councilman Passamit.[280.72][280.72]-[S06] A second.[281.36][281.36]-[S01] A second by Vice Chair Tavernick. Any discussion?[285.27][286.72]-[S07] No. Any discussion?[285.27][286.72]-[S09] No. Seeing none, all in favor of going into executive session? Seeing none, all in favor of going into executive session? By show of hands? By show of hands? Then it is unanimous, and we will adjourn to a room down behind here.[298.64][298.64]-[S08] To a room. Then it is unanimous, and we will adjourn to a room down behind here.[298.64][298.64]-[S08] To a room. ...incident to employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body. This is the annual performance review of the county administrator and the clerk to counsel. Under Section Code, Section 30-40-70A2, "Legal advice related to the discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." Discussion of an application for development agreement related to 98 Jennings Road. C. Under South Carolina Section 30-4-70A2, "Legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege." Discussion of an application for development agreement related to 98 Jennings Road. And it is unanimous, and we will adjourn to a room down behind here. To a room.
And we do have business from the caucus. We have an item arising from caucus.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for matters arising from caucus. Mr., I think Councilman McAllen has that.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a motion for a lump sum performance incentive for the county administrator. I move that council approve a one-time lump sum performance incentive for the county administrator based on his annual evaluation and the amount of $10,000 in recognition of his superior performance over the course of the last year and for our encouragement and expectation for him to continue his superior performance going forward.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Councilman Brown. Any discussion? All in favor by signaling? And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. At this time, we -- I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn caucus. And we'll have a break before we'll start the regular meeting of five minutes because we have to set everything up.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we are adjourned out of caucus and it'll be five minutes approximately. County council meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Gerald Dawson.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come before you just to say thank you. We thank you, oh God, for your love and kindness and all of your tender mercies. We thank you, oh God, for your gift of eternal salvation and through your Son, Jesus the Christ. We thank you for blessing us to see this day. We realize that it's not because of any goodness of our own, but it's because of your grace and your mercy. And we thank you. We ask your blessings now and upon all that are gathered here today. I ask your blessings upon this council as we gather to deliberate the issues that come before us. Bless us in our deliberations that we will come to a final conclusion and make the decision that benefits all the citizens of this county. And last of all, oh Father God, I pray for the salvation of the leaders of this nation. And I pray, oh Father God, that you will save our democracy. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Dawson. At this time, I'd like to make the statement of compliance with the Freedom of Information Act and confirm that with our county council clerk. That was done?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pass, Councilman Pass, and second by Ms. Tabernick. All in favor of a motion to approve the agenda? And that is unanimous. Any discussion? All right. Number five on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from August 11th, caucus and council, August 18th, special called council meeting, and August 20th, special called council meeting. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Larson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I think I heard Councilman Dawson. All in favor of approving the minutes by signaling by raising your hand? Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have two proclamations. The first one is recognizing September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Vice Chairman Tabernick will read that. And do we have some guests here? We'd like for y'all to introduce yourselves, too.
I'm Diane Brownfield, the Regent of the local Thomas Hayward Jr., Daughters of the American Revolution.
I'm Missy Thorpe. I'm the vice regent and the Constitution Committee chairperson.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for letting us be here.
So this is a proclamation whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim, I should say proclaim, September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, dated this eighth day of September Dated this eighth day of September, Ellis Howard, Chair of Beaufort Council.
This is beautiful. We thank you all so very much.
Have a few words.
Excuse me. Thank you.
It's an important thing.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I want to thank you for issuing this proclamation to us. President Eisenhower officially enacted the recognition of Constitution Week back on August 2nd, 1956. Every year since, the Daughters of the American Revolution has requested proclamations for the recognition of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. The Thomas Hayward Jr. Chapter, which is our local chapter here in northern Beaufort County, will recognize the adoption of the U.S. Constitution on Wednesday, September 17th, at the Henry C. Chambers Park near the Thomas Hayward Jr. Bust. We will have a Constitution display out there. We will also be handing out Constitution pamphlets to everyone that walks by and American flags. We will also be ringing the bells at 4:00 for recognition of the signing of the Constitution at that time. We ask that you all please join us at 4:00 PM and help us recognize this great document that has sustained our country for the last 238 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say thank you all again, and do join us. We've asked the Sons of the American Revolution and some of the other heritage groups to join us on that day. We plan to give out bells, and not a lot of people come in that area where our statue is, our bust of Thomas Hayward Jr. But we added two benches to that park, the SAR and DAR did on Lafayette Day. So we hope you'll come by, and we did have a few city council people there last year. So please come. Thank you.
Remind them the date, time, and location.
September 17th, 4:00, Waterfront Park.
We're going to take a photo for us. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Recovery Month, and Councilmember McKellen will read that proclamation.
I'm standing back here because they've already seen this, and if I stand over here this way, no one over here will see what's happening. So I decided to get everybody involved in this by standing. I know it's unusual, just bear with me. This is a proclamation recognizing National Recovery Month. This is important to me. I spent 30 years of my career doing this kind of work in a specialized area, and I came to realize it's a three-legged stool to deal with this. There's a law enforcement component, there's a training, I'm sorry, an education and prevention component, and then there's a treatment, rehabilitation, and recovery component. If you don't have all three of those legs for the stool, the stool will collapse. So this is a very important issue that we're dealing with, and I'm happy that we're recognizing National Recovery Month. This is the proclamation, I will read it. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of overall health and well-being, and prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in all its forms, and whereas millions of Americans have achieved long-term recovery from substance use and mental health disorders, demonstrating that recovery is possible and sustainable. And whereas the 2025 National Recovery Month theme is "Recovery is Real: Restoring Every Aspect of Life," highlights the importance of holistic healing and the power of recovery to transform individuals, families, and communities. Whereas National Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate improvements made by those managing other health conditions. And whereas this observance promotes the message that recovery in all its forms is possible, encourages people to seek help, and honors the dedicated service providers and community members who make recovery possible. And whereas the permanent tagline, every person, every family, every community, reminds us that recovery is a journey that touches all aspects of society and requires a collective effort. And whereas Beaufort County is committed to supporting evidence-based treatment, recovery services, and community-based programs that promote wellness and reduce stigma. And whereas September 20th, 2025, is recognized as National Addiction Professionals Day, honoring the vital role of addiction professionals as providers of prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery services, and as change agents who contribute to restoring every aspect of life. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Recovery Month in Beaufort County, and encourages all residents to support individuals who are in recovery, recognize the strength and resilience of our recovery community, and honor the professionals who make recovery possible. May I present this to you? You want to say a few words? I appreciate it if you would.
My name is Missy Doherty. After coming home from long-term treatment at Hagerstown, Maryland, June 1st, I signed myself up to NEXUS for IOP, intensive outpatient, and I've been there getting support from the counselors there. They have taught me how to cope with my addiction, given me plenty of counseling and learning to cope with life, and keeping my recovery. On September 24th, I will celebrate a year. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll have Mike Moore give his administrator's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. Tonight, I have Pinky here to provide an update on the real property tax interest refunds that we brought to you all's attention at a previous meeting. I'd like to first off, like, to say thanks to both Pinky's team, and Ebony, and the assessor, they've been working hard, as well as the Honor and Treasure, to try to get this all resolved for our citizens. So with that, Pinky, if you'd like to come on up, and we'll give you an update on where the refunds are and what the next steps are.
Good evening. Sorry. Just a quick update to let council know where we are with the refund process. Currently, the auditor's office has completed their portion of updating all the taxpayer accounts in our tax software. The treasurer's office is finalizing the data that they inputted, and then finance anticipates receiving that data tomorrow, from which we will then process checks by this Friday, October 12th. So the final total that we got to, we had lots of sets of eyes on this, so we got down to 1.1,401,692.16. And like Mr. Moore said, we've all been working collectively as a group between the auditors, treasurers, finance, and assessors offices to get this done, so we are happy to say that we'll be processing checks by this Friday. Also, from an accounting perspective, after speaking with our external auditors, Malden and Jenkins, we will be booking and expensing, we'll be booking the liability and expense back to fiscal year 2025 due to the fact that we were made aware of the error back in May of '25, and we've not done the hard close on the books yet, so we still have the ability to book the expense to last fiscal year. We had a significant amount of salary savings vacancy lag that we will be utilizing to cover this expense. So any questions on that?
Any questions?
So in addition to that, we have another tool that Sarah's going to bring up. The assessor's team and the county IT team has developed this database where taxpayers can go and check if they are on the list of properties or taxpayer accounts. This, can you see that? Sorry, I'm looking behind me. At any time, a taxpayer can plug in their property identification number or their alternate identification number to find out if they are on the list of taxpayers to receive a refund. If they need additional questions, it's on the assessor's webpage, so they're able to contact the assessor's office in regards to any of these refunds. We just wanted to make sure that we were providing clear, transparent, and accessible information for our taxpayers. Any questions?
No other questions? Oh, we have one? Okay.
So again, when the check goes out, it will have a notice in it, so the person will know why they're getting a check.
I do believe we decided to put refund, we used a code.
Because sometimes people think it's a scam, they don't know what to do with it.
Right. So I do believe that we consistently did that with this, and we're also running just a special check run just for this refund process.
Pinky, where do they find the access?
This is accessible on the assessor's webpage, so there's a link. Sarah, if you want to, do you mind popping back over to that? The link is on the assessor's homepage, so all you have to do is, and it says, Public Interest Payment Search Tool, so you just click on the hyperlink and plug in your property identification number or your alternate identification number, and it will pull up your name or your address. We tested it this morning a few times, and it does work.
Any other questions? None? All right. Thank you.
All right.
Good news.
Okay, next, I just want to give you all an update on Stormwater Awareness Week, which is September 22nd through 2020, or September 22nd through the 26th of this year. As you all have probably gotten a lot of calls recently about stormwater just because of a lot of the rain we've had. We have, staff has been getting out and responding to calls. I know that there's still a lot more work to be done, but it is a focus of effort. But I did want to highlight, there'll be several events and workshops in recognition of Stormwater Awareness Week beginning on Monday, and they're going to help raise awareness and help county residents learn what they can do to protect our waterways, maintain rain gardens, and manage stormwater issues on their property. On the 22nd, on Monday, there'll be a Stormwater Awareness Week kickoff event from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Shell Ring Ale Works located at 11th Street in Port Royal. That's going to be open to the public, so everyone can come to that. On Wednesday, September 23rd, there's going to be a rain garden maintenance workshop. That'll be open to the public. Location, time to be determined. On the Thursday, we'll be Understanding Vegetated Buffers from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Bluffton Library. And then on Friday, it'll be the Bio Swale, Bio Retention Maintenance Workshop, which is internal training for staff. So we'll get this information out via email to you all, so you can feel free to share that with folks.
I've seen it. It's on the media site, too, so it's great.
Great. That concludes my update. Subject to any questions?
Any questions? I think we've all had a lot of questions about stormwater last two weeks, but very timely.
And continue to refer them to me and staff, and we're going to work to resolve those issues as you've been doing.
I'd like to recognize the Chairman of Stormwater, Mark Feinberg, too. He's in the audience. Thank you for coming tonight. Yeah.
Mark, did you want to speak? No? Okay. All right. Just making sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Please be quiet.
All right. At this time, we are opening it up for public comment. I'd like to remind the public, when speaking, each member of the public shall address the chairman. Will avoid disrespect to council and any personalities. Will confine himself or herself to the questions under consideration, and council will not reply to any comments during this period. We do have a timer of three minutes, and I will take the order that people signed up. The first person is Philip Smith, if he would come forward, please. And then the person after him is Skip Hoagland.
I'd like to discuss communication, and communication specifically, I guess, with what you just lined us up on. Won't be able to get any answers, but you just talked about stormwater. And communication from us to our representative republic person, us not being a democracy, actually a representative republic or a representative democracy, which is a little different than what I've heard, we don't get any communication back from our council members. Specifically, one council member who's in my district, I don't get anything back on our stormwater. We flooded twice in the last storms, and got absolutely no response from one council member. Another council member from a different district did come out and come out and look at us, and come out and talk to us, but our council member never came out, never responded to emails, never responded to phone calls. So communication's real important to me. I don't understand why we can't get anything back. We can't get our roads paved, we can't get our stormwater drains fixed. None of that can be fixed if we don't get communication, and we can't even get our council member to come out and look at it. So it's important for y'all to communicate with us as it is for us to communicate with you to get these things done, so this gentleman can come out and find out where the problems are. Other than that, we have cell phone issues when you have communications with employees that don't do their job, and other members get in trouble for cellphone issues. So why would you have somebody get in trouble for an issue where they cannot communicate with their constituents? So you've taken that away from a member that does communicate, and you let a member that doesn't communicate have a phone that doesn't even talk to his constituents. I find that a little appalling.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next is Skip Hoagland.
Skip Hoagland, Windmill Harbor. First and most important, I would like to thank Tom Ritz for visiting me in Beaufort Jail at my request. What was shocking is how Tom was unfairly attacked for his kindness. Tom Ritz is one of the most honest elected officials in entire Beaufort County. I also consider him trusted, and why my wife and I fully supported Tom's election. There's been many conspiracy theories and lies swirling around. Tom, my wife, and myself were all interviewed by Beaufort investigator, and seems to have not only proven no wrongdoing, but totally exonerated Tom, as well as myself and my innocent wife who was dragged into this. I blame the GOP Henley, the Chair Henley, and Joe Dan Lee. They caused this by jailing me. The only onion that Sheriff Tanner needs to peel back is his own onion and others' onions. I saw lawyer Brian Holbert in the hallway from my jail cell talking to Colonel Grant. Soon after, all hell broke loose. If they didn't want Tom to have a phone, they should have taken it from him. They sensationalized all this and called it contraband. These are evil people. In case you have not noticed, the more honest and outspoken you are in Beaufort County, the more you are targeted. Beaufort County is an incestuous, back-slapping, back-room-dealing, fetid black hole of corruption and cronyism. Our legal and judicial system is riddled with malfeasance, judges' lung, clerk who tampers with juries, our lawyers all caught in criminal fraud, overcharged legal fees, malpractice, and more, even our mayor's. It's not a swamp where beautiful creatures live, it's a cesspool oversight of millions. I thank Tom, and like all of us, we're trying to learn how government works, and we're trying to fix it. Unfortunately, we have so many dishonest people serving, it makes it very difficult for part-time officials to even, to fix it. Nothing works part-time.
Mr. Hoagland, I'd like to remind you not to mention by name personalities.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to talk under the First Amendment, and I ask you to not ever interrupt me again. Don't ever do that. So I'm going to, so back my time up. Nothing works part-time. It's a failed political system. This is why I suggest a simple solution to help fix more transparency, accountability, to stop waste, legal use, and use of tens of millions of our tax funds. I ask this council to vote to fix our finance committee by simply adding 50% minimum local volunteer CPAs.
You have 29 more seconds.
No, I get more than that because you interrupted me. This committee takes full control of oversight in our annual budget and year-end audits, not the employees, and reports its findings directly to council. I call this the new Doge Finance Committee. A former FBI agent friend of mine told me, "Just follow the money, and your problems will end, and none of us need to be here anymore." And Brian Holbert was fired from Hilton Head for racist remarks five years ago. He disappeared, and then all of a sudden, he ended up here in Beaufort County. No, don't interrupt me.
Time is up.
You must hire, no, I am speaking, no, you took away my time. I want those seconds you took from me.
You will not refer to people by name.
You must, no, you must make up those seconds. You must hire honest lawyers with no ties to corruption. And Brian Holbert also committed criminal fraud, and I have facts that I can prove it. When I speak, I will give you the facts, not conspiracy theories. Thank you.
All right. Next is Mike, is it Mike Turner?
Turner.
Turner. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Turner, and I'm honored to speak to, to speak...
My name is Mike Turner, and I'm honored to speak about my good friend, Town Councilman Tom Reitz. Tom is a person of impeccable character without a malicious bone in his body. He's one of the most honest individuals I've ever met. The word integrity defines Tom. When Skip Hoglen was incarcerated, I understand he reached out to Tom for support. As he was struggling in the detention center under what seemed to be an excessively harsh sentence, Tom, acting as a concerned friend, visited Skip to check on his well-being. I understand he followed the detention center protocol, successfully navigating security to visit an inmate. The Beaufort County Council is a body created by law with authority limited to the powers granted by the South Carolina Constitution, state statutes, and local ordinances. Your role is to legislate county policy, oversee the budget, and to ensure essential services are provided responsibly. Equally important, your role is not to overstep those boundaries. When the council assumes powers reserved for the people, the courts or other levels of government, it risks undermining both the law and the trust of citizens. A good councilperson understands that restraint is as critical as action. Staying within the bound of your authority preserves good governance. A good councilperson listens to the people, makes decisions openly and transparently, and recognizes that the power you wield ultimately belongs to the voters, not yourselves. Until all the facts are revealed regarding any potential management or failure to follow protocol at the detention center, we should avoid public speculation that could unjustly harm the reputation of a good and honorable man like Tom Reitz. I understand Skip mentioned that he and Tom were in a designated visitation room when he asked Tom if he wanted to see the jail cell. Skip said that when they left the room, no attendant was in sight, and as they walked to his jail cell, as they walked to his jail cell. He also stated the cell was filthy. Why were they able to move freely? It appears the detention center staff failed to follow proper protocol. Additionally, Skip reportedly made 140 phone calls while incarcerated in two and a half days. Why is he permitted to make so many? This situation appears to be politically motivated rather than a matter of standard protocol. The people elected Tom Reitz to serve on the county council let him do his job. Any premature actions that threaten Tom's position constitute undue influence on a dedicated public servant. Thank you.
Next on the list is Lynn Greeley.
My name is Lynn Greeley, and I am from Hilton Head. I'm here to support Tom Reitz. Tom is a good citizen, honest, compassionate, and understanding councilman who has great integrity. Tom is a very constitutional person and does not work for the lobbyists, environmentalists, money, or special interest groups. Tom knows his job and knows who he works for, us, the people. County council is a deliberative body bound by law, fairness, and due process. When council members begin to discuss another member's personal conduct before all the facts are known, it undermines both the integrity of the council and the rights of the individual. Pressuring a fellow member to resign or attempting to coerce their vote not only exceeds the authority vested in this body, it erodes public trust and violates the principle that each councilperson is elected to serve independently on behalf of their constituents. Each member has one vote entrusted by the people who elected them, and that vote must remain free from intimidation or undue influence. Protecting that independence is essential to preserving the legitimacy and credibility of Beaufort County Council. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Next on the list is Arnold Brown.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Thank you for your service. I'm not here because I enjoy doing this. I'm here due to obligation. My family has been on St. Helena Island for at least 140 years. If my dad was alive, he would be here rather than me. So, I just want to say that when it comes to making a decision, in this particular case, as far as Pine Island and the CPO, I think two major criteria that would be looked at is either a political decision or a legal decision. If it's a political decision, we have had over 25,000 people sign a petition to support the CPO. 25,000, 25,000, excess of 25,000. I probably can think of 10 or 15 people I know that have not signed a petition. The governor, we've been in his office, over 20 people there. I won't call any names. State senators, House of Representatives. And then today, I came in at 3:00, and I heard Mr. Cunningham say that we were elected to represent Beaufort County. That includes St. Helena Island, so it's not just Mr. York Glover. It's everyone here to represent our interests as well. From a legal standpoint, you hear me say over and over again about the CPO law, over 25 years old, the 2040 Comp Plan, spot zoning, and then there's a moral law also that we have shown tremendous support, okay? Tremendous support. 25,000 versus maybe 75 people from the other side over the last three years, maybe 75 different people. I'm being generous with the 75 people. So, and when we think about, every time there's a meeting held, we pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. That suggests to me the Constitution. And then when we end that, we say liberty and justice for all. Liberty, we asking that we maintain liberty, and we want to maintain justice for all. We are, there's, we're not taking anything away from Mr. LVO, the investor. He hasn't lost a thing. He came in with the option to build 164 homes or a golfing gated community, which he knew that was not allowed. The other thing that enters into making a decision is called Kool-Aid. Some people have drinking the Kool-Aid. When I sit with some of his supporters, they say things like $80,000 job, generational wealth, reduce taxes, reducing crime rates. That's amazing. I was in Pat Conroy's class, and he didn't promise all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is Dave Ferguson. And after him is Chris Ruffner.
Good evening. Dave Ferguson, Hilton Head. I'm here to talk today about leadership and my good friend, Tom. And those two things go hand in hand, and I know that personally. I didn't really come here with anything prepared to say, because when I talk about someone's character, if I have to prepare for it, there's a problem right there. So, I don't have to prepare to talk to Tom. Internationally, people know me as a leadership expert. I don't say that myself, because I believe we should always be learning as leaders. So, I'll never call myself an expert, but I'm as close as you can get to it in this area. And I will tell you, what I'm seeing going on lately reeks of lack of leadership, whether it's on this council or on the council in Hilton Head. Doesn't really matter. I'm seeing a ton of it, and nationally, we see it. I wrote something years ago, and I call it my leader's creed, and I think it'd be really good for you all to hear, because as I looked at it earlier today and chose to talk about it, I thought of my friend, Tom, and he meets every piece of this creed. So, I'd like you to listen to it and see if you do. And if you do, that's great. I hope you do. If you don't, I hope you look to improve, and God, I'll help you if you need it. Be honest. Demonstrate integrity always. Keep your promises. Be loyal. Be loyal. He's part of your team. Be conscientious. Pursue excellence. Be kind and caring. Esteem all people. All people. Be fair. And at the end of the day, don't just expect us to be good citizens, you be good citizens as well. That's a good man. He's a friend. He's a neighbor. I would drive a lot further to talk about his character than I did tonight, and I hope you all will fully support this man. This is not the kind of leader, I've worked with a whole lot of leaders, this is not the kind of leader that's going to walk into a correctional facility and say, "I'm Tom Reitz, and I'm a county councilman," and expect to get any kind of privilege. He's not that kind of man. There was mistakes made here somewhere, and politically, someone's trying to blow this man up. And it's pretty obvious to some of us that, see, he's made some changes here, and he's asked different questions than some of you have asked in the past. And so, I just hope that you will truly consider this about this man, and about yourselves as well, because you could be next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Ruffner.
Hi there, Chris Ruffner, Windmill Harbor. I have to follow Dave. I'm a terrible speaker, so that didn't help me. I should have gone, next time, I'm before you, Dave. Unlike Dave, I am an expert in character, and Tom is the best. And actually, there's someone missing here tonight who has, is usually here, but his name's Grace Smith. He's a friend to us all. We're all together, a bunch of us were together on Flag Day, and he unfortunately had a heart attack, and we thought we lost him that day. And actually, he had to go to ICU, and he's still in the hospital today, three months later. And a bunch of us, he's friends with everyone, so it was hard to get in to see him in the ICU. And one of the reasons was Tom Reitz. He would not leave his side, and they can only have two people in there. And so, he was there, then we had to switch out one. Every once in a while, we snuck someone in against, don't sue me or anything, but I probably just screwed myself saying that, but anyway. Okay. But Tom, he's the best person. Him and his wife, Chris, they were there multiple times for hours. Let's see, do I have time? Okay, still have time, though. So, the other thing that I wanted to say was, my husband, every time we go to the airport, every time, he has a pocket knife. It never fails, because he uses it every day. He has it in his pocket every single day. He has his phone every day. He has a gun every day, but luckily, he didn't bring that. He always has his pocket knife, and so finally, last time, I said to the agent, "Can you believe this? Is my husband an idiot? Every time we come here, he has a pocket knife." And he goes on the floor, picks up a bin like this big, and said to me, "Throw it in here. This is just from the last hour." Everyone brings in their pocket knife, he says, because people are just used to bringing them their pocket knife. So, I just hope everybody, you know, can think of that. Everybody, we all have our phones on us all the time, everywhere. We're not looking, where can I, you know, can I bring it here, there? So, this is just blown out of proportion, and I just think that everybody just needs to know how special Tom is, and that we're all going to rally behind him, and like Dave said, we're going to go wherever we need to go, to the edge of the earth, to make sure that this man, this special man, is okay. So, thank you very much.
County Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am speaking on behalf of the commercial fishing industry in northern Beaufort County, but my business is seafood, Sea Eagle Market on Boundary Street. We were 20 years in Port Royal at CJ Seafood Express, and our dock facility is 34 Hallmark Road on St. Helena. But we sell seafood all over the state and all over Beaufort County. I don't know really where I want to start tonight. We had a meeting with Mr. Trippio and Mr. Dukes on August 2nd with the seafood industry, with the shrimping industry, crabbers. There were 17 in attendance. 14 out of those 30 letters were signed that day, and I think we'll probably have two or three more from that day. But also in those letters is businesses that I do business with in Bluffton, such as The Cottage, Barnacle Bill, and restaurants like Charlie's, Piggly Wiggly at Caligny Plaza. We have a lot of business all around Beaufort County, and when I presented to them the same thing that was presented at our meeting on August 2nd, they were more than happy to sign support, supporting us and supporting the fishing industry, because just as the gentleman said, a couple of speakers before me, the CPO would allow 150, 160 houses under the CPO. That's permanent residence, that's cars on the road, that's infrastructure needs. What has been offered in this development, they can call it downzoning, they can call it whatever, it's above my pay grade, but when I look at it, it's a no-brainer. It's over 300 acres not developed, set in perpetuity. Zero docks committed in every one of these letters. He's made a commitment to the fishermen on Village Creek to put no docks on the mainland versus potentially 70, 80, 90 docks on Village Creek. A reduction in homes to, from 150-plus to 49. It's just incredible that this is such a gift, and then we have these meetings every month, every week. I see people screaming and yelling, and it just, it doesn't make any sense to me that what's being offered is much better than the CPO. Now, I don't think we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but there was a report done by Rural Residential Development Risk in 2014. This was done by county council. If one of those large tracts is developed, then it could have a domino effect.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ashley Phillips from Hilton Head Island. I'm not sure what happened with Councilman Reitz and his visit to the detention center on August 20th, but what I do know is that several of his colleagues have thrown him to the wolves. For what reason, I'm not sure. The optics of what is happening is very disturbing. One of his friends is injured, and now it appears you're watching him getting eaten alive. What I can tell you is, the message is loud and clear to all of the citizens watching this. All the hope and excitement that we had of a new council, and a new chair, and a new vice chair, new county council, new county administrator is gone. Nothing has changed. The promise of transparency and earning the trust of the constituents was all words. When will this council learn? Thank you.
Next is Elise Lamarcas.
I have a request. I have been unable to communicate with my county councilman because you know where his phones are. Can you please, somebody get him another county phone, so his constituents can communicate with him? Is that so difficult? Since Thursday, he hasn't had a phone, any phone, personal or business. That is my request. Please. I think a decent county council would do that. I know that he would do it for you, any of you. This is a, perhaps, and this is an anomaly, okay? A decent, honest politician, he goes to your district, he goes to your district and my district, because he cares about us. He's not meddling. He's not trying to do things that aren't good for us. And how you reward him is to treat him like a pariah? What? I expected so much better from all of you. I thought things were improving. Ashley referenced it. New leadership, new transparency, we're not going to spend money stupidly. What are we doing? What are we doing right now? We're spending taxpayers' money trying to throw the most decent human being among you under the bus. under the bus. I'm very disappointed. You don't care, I know. I know you all well enough to know the ones that really don't care what I think. But I want you to look at the people here and listen to the people here. We are a small fraction of his district and yours and yours and yours and yours. And we will come out. I'm standing up for him today. We're going to stand up for him until this is over and fixed. And he is not resigning. He is not resigning. I elected him. He works for me, not you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lisa Disbrew. Am I pronouncing that correctly? No? Is that correct?
Disbrew. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today especially. Thank you, Mr. Passammon, for being involved in some things that I've been doing. I'd also like to thank Erin Dean, the General Counsel for Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, and Charlie Stone, the Director of Government Affairs for Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, for providing a lot of information. I have lived in the Oakmont subdivision off of Broad River Boulevard for 30 years. I've been through hurricanes, I've been through tropical storms. I have never seen the flooding the way I've seen in the last month on the Broad River Boulevard corridor. And I believe much of this is due to the deforestation and the expansive growth, the expansive growth of apartments, townhomes. And because of this, when it rains, we get flooded all along Broad River Boulevard. Houses, Oakmont subdivision, Chester Fields, Sunset Circle, Quail Ridge, Pleasant Farm, we are all getting flooded out. And what happens when it floods is our septic systems, which are antiquated, are failing. They fill up with water, sewage starts seeping out onto the lawns, down in the ditches, down the streets. And it's not just water, it's biohazardous waste. When my septic system is compromised, I cannot use my water. I can't bathe, I can't wash clothes, I can't wash dishes, I can't cook, I can't do anything unless we get some help out here. I'm not sure what can be done, but I'm looking to possibly start a sewer system out along the Broad River Boulevard corridor. I have lived there for so long, and I'm so tired of septic tanks flooding. We need some help out there. I know they had an excavator out there a couple of weeks ago digging ditches. That's a temporary fix. We need help. My poor neighbor has to have a sump pump to pump out our cul-de-sac every time it rains. And it's because of all the trees being cut down and all of the growth, the water has nowhere to go anymore. We need help. Mr. Passammon, I appreciate your help, and I really hope that we can get some help along the Broad River Boulevard corridor. And I am not the only one. Shell Point also has a major problem. These older subdivisions need help. We need to stop building new homes and take care of the people who live in these older homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lee Grenada or Granada. And William Smith is after Lee.
Councilwoman and council, I'm also here to support Councilman Tom Reitz. I've gotten to know him over the past couple of years and can say that I haven't met anyone more genuine, empathetic, kind, approachable. And what he did with Skip seems absolutely within his character. And I really do hope that you all or whoever is investigating this matter is going to do due diligence and going to look and see, are there any reprimands from the staff while Tom was visiting? Did someone that was working there actually act inappropriately and allow a felony to exist on their watch? Because you would think, I would suspect, that that would actually result in something like a disciplinary action. So I hope that those kinds of investigations are happening. Certainly, we don't want to lose him at all. I think he's a great model, great model for me, great model for so many of us. And again, he has hands and feet out here in the community, whether or not you are in his district. I would also like to just offer that sadly, I think that those of us that have gone against some authorities, maybe law enforcement, or pointed out some things that needed to get looked at, we are actually targeted. I think that's been alluded to already tonight. Two years ago, I was in front of you all, and I told you about my house fire that never got investigated. It's been almost six years. And Moss Creek burned also either, the two houses on either side of it. And my young child ran from that fire where he had been left alone. You know, that's one of those things that will change you, that will change what you're willing to speak out about. And I think that our sheriff has got opportunities to do a lot better. I have recently authored something in my Substack, which is Lee on SC, but it's called "The Shut Up Sheriff." And I believe that we're seeing a pattern, that those of us that do speak out and do say, "You've missed the mark, you're not doing what you need to be doing." Sheriff Tanner did testify against Skip. And Tom visited Skip, and then Skip is out, and now Tom is sadly being implicated in some kind of wrongdoing. This is a pattern. And I do hope that you all will consider that, and I hope that you'll give it due diligence because we're suffering out here. When you're going to investigate a councilman who, I would bet the farm if I had a farm, that he didn't push his way through anywhere. He followed instructions because he lives respectfully and that way to everyone. When you spend resources and there's mainstream media out there that is ruining a reputation, but yet a house fire that nearly killed a child is ignored, we've got a big problem. So, thank you for considering that.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, council. How y'all doing? Appreciate each and every one of you. Let me start off by saying this. Tonight, I want to address some of the wealth gap that we have in Beaufort County that sometimes it seems like it's being ignored. What the wealth gap is, in terms of, before you put a house up or even a trailer up in Beaufort County, you have to pay these impact fees and these different fees. These fees are very expensive. And if you don't have it or if you're not, if you don't have a job that's paying 20 to $35,000 an hour, it's hard to compete, to compete to even be able to do that. I mean, and we have an industrial park, but we don't have those industrial jobs. You know, the jobs of serving people, and I love having the military here and love having the tourism, but tourism ain't getting it done. And then we have, like someone said a few minutes ago, we're putting all these apartment complexes up, and we're wondering why this guy here's job is so hard because the trees are going. We're cutting the trees down, soaking up the water. And we're having more and more water in Beaufort. I mean, we're beginning to be the next Charleston. If it rains lightly, the place is full, it's flooded. We need to go back and look and see at the applications of these developers who we have approved and see how long are we going to continue to allow Beaufort to get developed? Because in a minute, we are going to look like Charleston. All money ain't good money. Let me keep moving on that note. And the last thing is, I came up here also talking about kids and talking about this wealth gap. There was just a death that took place in Beaufort County. We keep putting people from this place, a side of town, that side of town, and we're taking people out of their comfort zone, having to find babysitters because of this wealth gap. And then we wonder why Beaufort County, in all my years of living, I ain't never seen a crime rate to raise that right now. It's a reason. You're taking people help from them, you're cutting people's legs from under them. We're talking about helping these kids, we ain't helping these kids. The library closed before time? Where can these kids go in Beaufort County? Or hell, where can people, period, go and take their families, or even on this side of the Broad, and have a family night? You can't. There's no movie theaters? There's no bowling alley? But yet, I see this council back and support people and give people breaks. Y'all know my time is here. I see them give people breaks in businesses. I've come here several times asking, waiting for a solution to come to me and tell me, "How are we going to take care of our babies and how are we going to take care of our families and help them eat in this county?" At some point in time, we're going to have to do it. And I'll be back. I'll be back.
At this time, we are going forward with the liaison and committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports they'd like to give? We'll start at the end with Councilman Dawson.
I attended the Low Country Council of Governments meeting two weeks ago. And Director Sabrina Graham gave a handout to all the board directors. And I'm going to read it. The South Carolina Department of Transportation will hold a public hearing on Interstate 95 corridor improvements. The public hearing will be held September the 11th of 2025 about the proposed improvements to Interstate 95 between US 278, that's Exit 8, and South Carolina 336, that's Exit 21, into Jasper and Collington County. The purpose of the proposed project is to improve capacity, mobility, and operations along the 13-mile corridor of 995. The open house and public hearing will take place at Lakeside at Blue Heron. The address is 153 James L. Taylor Drive, Ridgefield, South Carolina. The date is September the 11th. From 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., will be open house to view the project displays, ask questions, and provide feedback. At 6:00 p.m., they will hold a public hearing, and they will have a formal presentation and comment session as well. Comment period for this project is DOT will accept comments on this proposed project from August 28th until October 2nd, 2025. And you can find more detail on the SEDOT website pertaining to this project.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman McKellen. I didn't mean to skip you.
No, that's okay.
Do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving down the line, Councilman Cunningham?
Ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
I'm on the Design Review Board, and we met last Thursday. And the only news is that the Sam's Club out in Bluffton is getting repainted. That's about it.
All right. Vice Chairman Tabernick?
You know, I have a report. I attended with Mr. Moore, the Southern Low Country Regional Board. All the municipalities in Jasper County were there. The meeting was in Bluffton. There was a report about a new YMCA going up in Harderville. They asked us if we would like to contribute to the pickleball courts, and Mr. Moore and I simply didn't respond. There was an update from the Red Cross, they're seeking volunteers. On the 27th, I attended an event, Mr. Reitz was there, and Senator Davis, who's in the audience, at Mitchellville Freedom Park. It was a momentous step forward in its mission to preserve and interpret the legacy of America's first self-governing town of formerly enslaved people. This was a groundbreaking ceremony for this new facility, which is an archaeological research facility and auditorium. It was a significant milestone in the park's long-term vision to expand public understanding. And as I sat there, I heard them recognize Senator Davis for 13 years of commitment to Mitchellville. I think I got that right, right? 13 years? So they did recognize his efforts for Mitchellville. I went to LowCOG, I attended, and Sabrina's retiring. And then last Thursday, I attended the legislative delegation with Mr. McKellen. And again, Senator Davis is here, so if I don't give a correct report, you can correct me. Bill Herbgerstman noted that as of that date, there was no update on derelict boat legislation for the county. The legislative delegation recognized Marie Smalls. She just retired as our Director of Voter Registration after 20 years of service. The new Chair of the Voter Registration Committee, Matt Sweeney, reported that we now have 134 precincts in Beaufort County. And then he presented three issues, one which really shocked me. The first issue, he said, was they're asking for increase in poll worker pay from 135 to 175. And he did recognize that this county added $100 extra in pay for last year. Their polling locations, there are not enough locations. For example, in Sun City, we have two polling locations for 10 precincts, which is really not satisfactory. And the item that really surprised me was procurement of voting machines. The county picked up 39 new precincts in '24. The state paid for new machines in the past. And now, if the county needs more machines, the county will have to budget for them. Representative Newton looked right at me and suggested that the county plan to budget for native machines up to five years out. So I'm throwing that for discussion during finance. And my last report is school board, and Mr. Smith is here from the school board, so he can correct me if I'm not right. I watched their meetings. In August, they held lots of committee meetings. Technology operation, legislative, finance, academic, you guys are really busy in a workshop. And I do want to say that they recognized Dr. Alindy Thompson. She won the Inez Tannenbaum Leadership Award. She's principal at Battery Creek. This award is given to one principal in this state who has an unwavering commitment to public education, so they recognized her. They also discussed the fact that they would like to have a joint meeting with this council to discuss USCB Arena Convocation Center. And then, of course, their treasurer or CFO gave a financial update. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tabernick. I'd like to report on Beaufort Memorial Hospital. I attended two of their meetings. One was with Representative Shannon Erickson, and she spoke to the board members and other committee members about upcoming issues in the next legislative session that the hospital might want to be aware of or work on. One thing that surprised me was the amount of nurses and other staff who are physically attacked in a hospital environment. And Shannon Erickson vowed to help and help to see if laws can be changed, where those things can be changed from simple assault to higher charges. The regular board meeting of the hospital was held a week ago, Wednesday, and the construction at the Bluffton site is going very well and is on schedule. Okay? Do you have any?
Yeah, I actually have two things. One, this is just for all of councilmen and the public to know. At the Community Services Committee meeting, we had a presentation from the Children's Center. I believe they submitted a proposed resolution that's being worked on right now, that's going to come forward to everybody. That resolution is to go to the State House in order to show our support for a TRICARE plan. When I say that, TRICARE, basically trying to make childcare more affordable by having the state, the employer, and the parent all contribute to that childcare cost. And we're going to be passing that resolution here hopefully soon. The other thing I want to discuss and throw out there is I've been appointed to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for the city of Beaufort. We had an update from the engineer, and we're planning a charrette here soon with that engineer, McSweeney Engineers. And they have essentially, I think, we have eight different potential options. And we need the public's input on which way we need to go with this so we can narrow that down and have that money go to focus in on the design standards and make it reflect what the community wants. And, you know, while a lot of people see this as, "Oh, no, the waterfront's closed," and I really see this as an opportunity to shape the next 75 to 100 years of Beaufort County and the city of Beaufort as well. So I really want that input.
All right.
Really do not have anything, except on the consent agenda. We do have a couple of reappointments to the airports board. And then our next Finance Administration Committee meeting is next Monday, the 15th.
Okay. All right. Councilman Passammon?
The Library Board will be meeting this Wednesday.
And we are going to have some openings on the Library Board, too. We've got some people who have resigned because of their limit on how long they can serve. Okay, Councilman Reitz?
Thank you, Chair Wolfman. Mine's going to be very brief. I haven't had phones or email, and I'll work on that tomorrow to get that recovered. But... But to Vice Chair's point, Mitchellville, that happening last week or whenever we had there was just wonderful. And the history from 1862, you know, the first self-governing body, amazing. So we got a beautiful county we're living in. When I started on council, I quickly became a liaison to the airport board. Is John Rembold here, by the way? He was here earlier? Over the last two months, I interviewed about five or six people. We have about 12 that applied. I've interviewed about five or six that are, all of them are qualified. So when I started, there were openings, and there was nobody in the wings, if you will, to apply. And we, you know, finally have a great group there. I saw somebody here from Palmetto Breeze. I want to let you know that by tomorrow, I should get back in the game and get you going with Mr. Sullivan and our people on the finance and the shortfall. We haven't, hey, we haven't forgotten about you. You know that. I think the most important thing is whether it's airport boards or Palmetto Breeze, I'm a liaison to the people, and I want to thank you for your heartfelt messages and thoughts and prayers. And I want to cut you loose right now so you can get home safely, right? It's late, it's dark and all, but I got to tell you, you bring the love like that, you can't beat it. No matter what happens, you can't beat it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reese. At this time, I'd like to entertain, we have a list of 12 items, you know, 12 items, more than that. On our consent agenda, which was published, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Second it.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I do have one thing. I'm going to vote yes on the consent agenda, but I renew what I said at one of the committees. We are awarding large amounts of money to these engineering firms and some of these other consultants to get these things done. I know right now, I think we're at the mercy of them, but I think at some point, if it becomes feasible, I'd like to see some of these things done in-house to save the taxpayer money. But like I said, right now, I am going to vote yes on the consent agenda, but just want to reiterate that concern.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda by show of hands? And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. At this time, we are going into ordinances for second reading. I'll turn this over to Ms. Tabernick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first one is 2025/37. It's an ordinance for second reading, amending the zoning map for 11 acres located on Burnt Church Road. Map R 600 039 000 1552 0000. And there's two more maps with lots of zeros. And it's to amend from T3 Hamlet neighborhood to T4 Hamlet neighborhood. The vote at the Natural Resources Committee on June 2nd was 4-1 and one abstention. The vote at the first reading and public hearing on June 23rd failed 6-5. The vote for motion to reconsider on July 13th at council meeting passed 8-1. And the vote at first reading on August 11th passed 10-0. Can I have a motion for this ordinance as read and hopefully shown up on the screen?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to make that motion.
Second it.
All right. So he's making the motion as I read it, and it's supposed to be up on the screen. And Mr. Lawson, you seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion and a second for this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Just for clarification, it was July 14th, not 13th. The 13th was a Sunday.
Okay. All right, 14th. All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone have a question, comment? I think this one's come up enough times already.
Yes, I do have to give the reasons for the request.
Yes, you do.
So I move that we grant the request for rezoning for the following reasons. One, it is consistent with the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Code and the purchase purposes of the Development Code. Two, it is not in conflict with provisions of the Development Code and/or our Code of Ordinance. Three, it does address a demonstrated community need. Four, it is required by changed conditions. Five, it is compatible with existing and proposed use of land surrounding this land. It would not adversely affect nearby land. Number seven, it would result in logical and orderly development patterns. Eight, it would not result in adverse impact on the natural environment. And nine, it would not, it would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Passamet. Yes? Oh, we need a second. Mr. Lawson did.
I seconded it.
He already seconded it. All right. All in favor of this ordinance to pass?
Let me just, discussion real quick, just to say that we've talked about this before, and this is considered a downzoning for the number of units that were available there. And again, this is in my district, so I just wanted to point that out, so before we voted.
Okay. All right. All in favor of this? Raise your hand. All right, thank you. All right, we are, ordinance 2025/41 is an ordinance to amend fiscal year 2025-26 budget ordinance to carry over fiscal year 2025 purchase orders and orders and funds. This is a public hearing, so can I have a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Please say it's a motion as read and shown on the screen. There it is, so the public knows what the motion is. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second. All right, pink, Ms. Harriet, would you like to say something on this? Oh, this is a public hearing, so.
I'm just here to answer a question.
Yeah, okay. So it is a public hearing. I have one person signed up to speak on this. Mr. Hoagland, you put number one, you wanted to speak on this?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, sure enough.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Felice Lamarcas after her. Oh, that's on intended.
These are the other ones, yeah.
It's only on number one.
What we need to fix is the fact that no one on council is a CPA. I'm not a CPA, so when I talk about y'all, I'm talking about myself. No one really understands the budgets and the year-end audits. We look at all this stuff and all these numbers, and we're just like, we don't really know. Therefore, we have no oversight. We're dependent on the millions of our tax monies to be controlled by our town employees. And so I thought about this, and I have a simple way to fix this. And I, but I want to give you some history on what motivated me to start a lot of my research on AI technology. And I started with Doge, which was started by Musk in Washington, D.C. And that man is probably one of the greatest gifts to humanity. And his Doge is maybe one of the most brilliant ideas that I've ever seen in my life, not to mention all the other stuff the guy does. He's an amazing individual. So Musk started Doge, and I really, because I'm such a, I'm really a huge financial person. I really, I really focus on financial transparency. So Doge started that, and it started working. Then the next thing I saw is Governor Abbott in Texas passed into law Texas Doge. And then I said to myself, and I started getting on AI, I said, well, the trillions and the billions are really in the towns and the counties, not just in South Carolina, the United States, but all over the world. And so I bought this name, City Doge, for the people, by the people. And I said that what we need to do is so simple, that I was, it was all complicated on AI. And I said, it's really simple, that the counties and the towns, they're not like the Washington, D.C. or the government. That's a different technology. The towns and the county, we can start right here in Beaufort County. I want to start here in Beaufort County and the town of Hilton Head as a laboratory test and take this worldwide. And all we have to do is so simple. We change our finance committee, and we make it a requirement to have local volunteer CPAs, 50% of our committees made up by CPAs. And these CPAs in this committee would oversee all the budgets, all the year-end audits, not the employees. And then this committee will report to council because you are, and it goes from there. And it's that simple. And what that does is that stops, they review everything. It stops all the potential waste and potentially any kind of crimes that are being committed. And that's it. That's a simple idea. So I ask you to ask for volunteer CPAs from this community to serve on your finance committee. And I guarantee you, you'll never have to see me again. You'll never have to hear me again.
Is that going to be a promise?
I, if you'll do that, I won't come again.
You won't come for ATAX either?
Well, that's a different story.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. This is a public hearing. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? All right. Anyone on council have a question or comment for Ms. Harriet? Okay. Then we will take a vote for the motion on the floor. All in favor of passing the motion, raise your hand. All right, there you go. You're free tonight, Ms. Harriet.
Well, I did forget to mention something earlier today when I was up here. Just wanted to let you all know that your 2026 digital budget book is now live and available on our website, and there's a release going out with it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, ordinances for first reading. 2025/42 is an ordinance amending the zoning map for 86.16 acres located at 98 Jennings Road, R 1028 000 0264 000, from T2 Rural to T3 Hamlet neighborhood and T4 Hamlet Center, utilizing the Hamlet Place type overlay. I need a motion from the floor, please.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, the motion, and it is up on the screen for all to read. A second?
Second it.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite the developer and anyone he has to speak. And this is for the zoning map amendment only. Hello, Mr. Merrick?
Hello. Good evening. Wait for the presentation to come up. White's coming up. Good evening. My name is Rob Merrick, and I'm here on behalf of Polte Homes. I'd like to begin by sincerely thanking you for your time. We truly appreciate the opportunity to work alongside you as we move forward with the zoning map amendment and the development agreement for Ramsey Farms. We're also grateful for the support we've received from the Natural Resources Committee, the valuable feedback from council, the community, and all who have provided assistance to help us reach this point. This proposal represents a thoughtful and responsible approach to growth, one that aligns with the county's comprehensive plan and long-term vision. This presentation provides a comparison of staff comments and our applicant narrative, organized by nine criteria, to present a clear and transparent assessment. Each point is supported by references to the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, the Action Playbook, which emphasizes alignment between zoning decisions and long-range planning Item one, consistency with the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning request presents no identified conflicts, as confirmed by the staff review. The proposal aligns with the Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, which emphasizes the importance of ensuring zoning decisions and are in harmony with the county's long-range planning goals. Additionally, the location and land use support the county's objectives for affordable and workforce housing by promoting proximity to schools, services, and employment centers, key factors in creating inclusive, livable communities. Two, conflict with Development Code ordinances. No conflicts have been identified with Beaufort County Development Code or any other applicable ordinances, as confirmed by the county staff. The plan also encourages a reevaluation of the place-type overlay tools to ensure they remain aligned with the community's desired development patterns and character. Our proposal embraces that direction and reflects a thoughtful and coordinated approach to growth. Three, demonstrated community need. As we consider the future of Ramsey Farms, we recognize the importance of addressing a clear and growing community need, workforce, and affordable housing. Our proposal emphasizes economic diversity and housing options that are attainable for young professionals, military families, and first-time home buyers. This aligns with the 2040 Beaufort Comprehensive Plan, which supports strategies for workforce housing and affordability, as outlined. We believe this project directly responds to those priorities and helps fill that critical gap in the local housing market. Four, required by changed conditions. While the staff has noted that this amendment is not required by changed conditions, we respectfully offer a different perspective. Market conditions have evolved significantly, and the current use no longer reflects the realities of the population growth, housing demand, and increase in home pricing. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan encourages redevelopment and infill to meet these demands, as outlined, and acknowledges the need to adapt zoning to meet evolving housing needs. Our proposal responds to these shifts by aligning zoning with current and future community Five, compatibility with surrounding uses. The proposed development presents a strategic infill opportunity that enhances walkable access to nearby schools, shopping centers, and medical facilities, key components of a complete and connected community. As brought to our attention in August's special council meeting, the northern Beaufort County schools are currently operating under capacity, which presents an opportunity to guide growth where infrastructure can support it and making this location especially suitable for thoughtful residential growth. The 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan encourages development that complements existing neighborhoods. The site supports that vision by improving accessibility and reinforcing the character and functionality of the surrounding land use. Six, adverse effects on nearby lands. Beaufort County played an important role in facilitating the traffic study for this project and assisted in identifying the nine study areas evaluated by Kim Lee Horn. The study concluded that the proposed development would generate only a modest traffic increases, all of which fall well within the capacity of existing and planned infrastructure. While this project contributes to the overall traffic volume, it represents only a small portion of the cumulative impact in the area and is not the primary driver of the traffic Seven, logical and orderly development pattern. The proposed development reflects a logical and orderly growth pattern by placing higher residential density near schools and major roads. Our plan emphasizes walkability and connectivity, aligning with the Comprehensive Plan goals for creating pedestrian-friendly environments, specifically the plan that promotes safe routes to schools, encouraging pedestrian-oriented infrastructure that allows children to walk safely to nearby schools. Eight, adverse impacts on the natural environment. The proposed development has been designed with environmental responsibility in mind. As noted in the staff comments, the project must comply with all applicable environmental standards, and we have proactively exceeded the required civic space and natural resource protections into this site plan. Adequate public facilities, all relevant agencies have been notified regarding the proposal, and no concerns have been raised related to public facilities. Our plan aligns with the Comprehensive Plan goals for infrastructure planning and coordination, ensuring that growth is well-supported by the existing public services. Additionally, this project, consistent with priorities outlined in the county's capital improvement plan, reinforcing our commitment to responsible, well-coordinated development. The Comprehensive Plan acknowledges the growth in Beaufort County is both desired and inevitable. Achieving balance requires guiding development to the land that is most suitable, based on the sound, economic, cultural, social, and environmental principles. Our proposed zoning amendment reflects this vision by aligning the county's long-term goals for responsible and coordinated growth. We welcome any questions that you may have this evening and respectfully request a recommendation of approval for the proposed zoning map amendment. To help ensure your questions are addressed thoroughly, we're joined with Walter Nest with Burr and Foreman, Josh Tiller with J.K. Tiller and Associates, Jeff Ackerman with Carolina Engineering, and Jack Conant with Kim Lee Horn, each available to speak to their respective areas of expertise in land planning, engineering, and traffic. Thank you.
Anyone else you'd like to speak?
Unless you have questions.
We don't have any, none on the zoning map amendment. But do you have someone else you'd like to speak on your behalf?
I think I'm.
Okay.
I'm going to open it up to the public for speaking on the zoning map amendment, not the development agreement. And I have signed up here, Felice Lamarcas, you signed up for this one? Come on up. Come on up.
Kim Lee Horn did a traffic study, and I believe you have this, and they looked at nine roads and how the 488, minimum of 488 cars, are going to impact this area. They omitted this road from their study. Does anyone know what that road is?
I'm guessing Jennings Road.
Robert Smalls Parkway. What is Robert Smalls Parkway also known as?
170.
170.
You got an A, 170. I have nothing against Polte, but understand this: They have developed from New River all the way close to Oldfield. What's wrong with 170? Have they attempted to help us fix 170? But they've added thousands of cars, and we face it every day. So here they are in Beaufort, and we may need this housing development, I don't know. I use Broad River Boulevard. When I'm coming back from Hilton Head, I get off 170 as soon as I can, and I go down Broad River Boulevard to cut over to Boundary. So I'm very familiar with this area, and it's quite rural and quite beautiful, and there are lots of families living there that look like they love living there. And I just wonder if some assessment has been done to know if this is really needed, and if it is, can we stand the cars, because we're about to do to Beaufort what's been done to Oakatie and Bluffton? So please consider this as we move forward with responsible growth and development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Ms. Joyce Gibbs. Come on down. Hello.
Like you said, my name is Joyce. I'm here, I've heard Rob speak time and time about the 2040 plan, and of course, we have that 2040 plan. You guys should know it back and forth, because Beaufort County wrote the 2040 plan. But when we went to the meeting, I think it was just for a picture kind of things for us, because nobody listened to what we said when that 2040 plan was written. And now you're coming with Rob, and all these other developers in this, in our community. My grandmother, grandfather has lived there, I'm saying great, great, great since 1790, let's go back to that. And when we speak of our neighborhood, it's, to us, it's like no different from the 17 and the 1800s, when those proprietors were coming in and taking our land. You see, we are the natives here. Nobody really wants to hear what we have to say. What it sounds like to me is that you're only interested in how much you can get. But there was a young lady that came up here, talked about so many other things, a number of people, so many other things that this board could really be working on in this county. You have built up the roads when it comes to stormwater drainage, at Broad River Road, you built that road up so high, all the water ran off on my property, and I had to do my whole septic tank over to prevent the water from taking over. Our church that we go to, on that same Paris Island gateway, the water is running in our parking lots, off of the main roads. And now these developers are coming, and when they are building, they are building the land up higher, coming in with all that dirt, and now all the water is going to run off on us. Nobody is thinking about all the animals that are in our backyards now, and in our front yards now, and we can't do anything about it. So we're asking you, because we've been paying taxes, and paying taxes, and paying taxes again, and again, and again, and this developer has not been approved by the planning committee. It has not been approved time, and time, and time again, and they're keeping, coming back, and having us to come back again, and again, and again, to figure out how you all can accept their project, when they were never able to present it to you so it could be acceptable the first time. But you're going to try to find a way to continue, to try to figure out how you can continue to build houses on top of houses. And I promise you, we hear sirens every day, people are getting killed. Where are they coming from? Who are all these people? And by the way, I submitted to you a document that you should have about the housing in... Herbert Glaze talked about the housing from Shadow Moss, when he was last here, and talked about how you all, the people love it. The people can't afford it. People can't afford to live at Shadow Moss, they can't afford to live at Habashan, and they sure can't afford to live downtown Beaufort anymore. So who are you all wanting to come to our neighborhoods and to our areas, when I have Beaufort County wages and salary report? You guys aren't paying the people no money to be able to afford these houses, but you're going to approve it? Stop. Stop doing it. Fix the roads. Fix the water. Help the people. And stop. If you're going to build houses, give us a chance to figure out how the impact of the other houses that you've already built. We've been here several times, presented to you at least five, or six, or seven, or eight. Even Shadow Moss is extending a project in their area right now, more houses they're building. I met them over at the zoning when I saw them, and I talked with them. Even they are building, continuing to extend Shadow Moss. So what are you all going to do to help us? Because we voted for you, and we asked you to stick with us, not the proprietors, not these new names called developers. They're the same people.
Thank you, Ms. ... I have Barbara Childs. Ms. Barbara Childs is next on my list to speak about number two. Oh, here she comes, okay. This is on the zoning map amendment.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Childs. I am a retired planning staff, Beaufort County Planning Staff person, and I am against this rezoning. The last time I spoke, I mentioned density. The allowed current density for the 86 acres is 28 development units. They are proposing, they proposed originally 258 dwelling units, and they've cut it down to 244, and I'm not sure, no numbers were mentioned this time by the developer as to whether they even cut that down. But 244 versus 28, that's a lot of folks, that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of problems, that's a lot of vehicles, and the schools, walkable schools, are only the high school, Better Creek across the street on Jennings, and just a little further down, the Robert Smalls International, it's a middle school. But the elementary school is way up on Shankland Road. I would not have my child walking on Joe Fraser Road. There is no walkability for elementary schoolchildren. In the day when I was going to school, we walked miles, but these days, the kids are put on buses, et cetera. It's, the impact is, for that area, is going to be horrific, and I say, no, do not approve it. Thank you so much.
Next I have Carol Dorey to speak on the zoning map amendment. Carol, D-O-R-A-Y? Okay, sorry.
Hello, Carol. Thank you for hearing us. I was kind of concerned at first that we weren't going to be able to do this, because it is, really is a concern. I just hope it's not an exercise of fertility, because we've been here before. This project is really a chameleon, like's been spoken of before. Even though they've changed the color, it's the same project. But I have to admit, it was a much better project than first time around. But they're already cutting trees and surveying in there, so they're going as, they're going forward as much as they possibly can without these two meetings. But I wonder at times if there's a disconnect between the planning committee and the development codes. This LLC company, according to the county's website, is a Michigan firm, but according to their website, they're based in Atlanta, Georgia, so they're really not here. They're not here concerned about Beaufort County, they're concerned about the economic benefit it'll bring to them. Go ahead. We are in, I feel we're a financial investment to them and nothing else. Beaufort County residents should mean more to you than that, and I know they do, because you're here, and it does to us, because we're here as well. One of these apartment complexes is so crime-ridden that a police substation had to be put there. One had so much flooding a few weeks ago, the people had to park out on 170, and others had to get tow trucks to get their cars out of water. And as far as that rain, when we had so badly, water was actually running across Jennings Road. So if it's running across Jennings Road, and there's vegetation over there, what's going to happen whenever it's all concrete and they don't have that ground to soak into? Granted, not all of these projects have problems, but I found, just from the news, that there, that some problems are almost, there's some problems with some, wait, let me try that again, there are some problems with almost all of them, and there are recurring problems with the older ones. You just can't stack people on top of each other without anything to do, especially the young people, and not expect problems. The last time we met, one of the problems would be traffic in that area, and that's still a problem, and that's been addressed by many, by people that knew more about it than I do. But if you go at certain times on that road, it is bumper to bumper, when school's out, when there's a game, when there's anything, there's housing at one end, and I know as far as the, I'm sure they're state roads, to get anything done there would take years for any improvement in that area. The gentleman presenting the plan the last time said that they had talked to Beaufort-Jasper Water Authority, and that they were okay with this project. Well, according to an article that I brought in the Post and Courier in May, it said Beaufort-Jasper needs $600 million to keep up with the growth, and at times, they're stressed enough that they don't know if they can take care of what we already have in the county. And of course, with all this, that means, of course, there'll be grants and different things, but we also know the increase will be put back on the residents, and at this time, they're thinking possibly 18%, and that, I'm sure, will vary as they get along with it. We should stop focusing on economic development and look at the price that we're paying, including the reduction of resiliency in our county. Schools need to be better. Crime is bad, and as I mentioned the first time, crime is getting so bad in Beaufort County, we have over 80 unsolved murders, and I didn't check to see what that number is now, but that's very near to my heart, because one of those, one of those statistics is my granddaughter. We have congestion, we have scarcity of resources, including medical. Just to get into a doctor can take six months or longer, for most people, it's longer. So we really can't take care of what we already have here. The quality of life should mean more than quantity. Even if Beaufort County has the same requirements as Beaufort City, it's keeping 25% of the trees and greenery, it's better than clear-cutting, that some of them are done, but it's still putting lipstick on a pig. I made a few notes as the gentleman was talking, and I thought, when he talks about walking to stores, unless you're probably 18, you're not going to walk to a store, because you'd have to go down, Walmart would be the closest, if you cut through the woods and go through the ditch and get in their parking lot. The schools are better at Creek, which is down the road, but as far as Robert Smalls and Broad River, those children cannot and will not be walking that far, and there are no medical facilities in that area at all, I know, because I'm at 183 Jennings Road. So, but I'm just concerned about the change to that area, and I don't think we need the change to that area. I think we need to before Beaufort County goes off a cliff. We need to stop and realize what we're doing to what we already have before we lose it all. Thank you.
My last person to sign up is Louise Brown. Louise Brown, please.
Good afternoon to each and everyone. My name is Louise Brown, and I lived on Ramsey Loop Number One, but I was born and raised in Burton my whole life. I lived there for a couple of years, I left after I got married, but I came back. And I'm not for that project that they're planning on doing, I'm not for that. I am a single mother, I don't have a husband in the house with me. I have a grandson that goes to work. At night, between 11 or 12 o'clock, I have to leave out of my house to go pick him up from work, and I'm not afraid, because I know everybody that lived in the neighborhood. But if you bring other people in, why should I be paying for my home that I'm living in to be afraid, to go out at night to pick up my grandson from work? And the project is not finished yet, but as I look, because it's right down the road from me, they're clearing out pathways, like they got their approval already. But I'm not for it, and right in the front of my house, there's a drainage ditch. When we had that rain, front of my house was drowned out, the road, because the drainage, since I've been there, and I've been there for years, I couldn't tell you the last time that somebody came to clean the drainage out. So what is in there is dirt and leaf, so the water can't even go through the drainage, so it's staying up on top of the road. And right in the, on the left side, there's a water hydrant. They have, I think it's about three, I don't know what you call those, drainage that, it's in the ditch, I know it's connected to the water hydrant. If I don't get someone to, when they cut my yard, to clean the ditch out, it'll be a totally mess. So I've had two people that came to my house, they did my yard, but I wasn't at home, and the drainage is, whatever, I call it the drainage, it's off of, underneath the ground, so when their lawnmower went on top of it, it tore their riding lawnmower up. So I was responsible for that, because I called the water department, they said, and nothing they could do, I mean, I called the county, the guy came and looked, he said nothing he could do about it, he said, "Call the water department." I called the water department, let me tell you what they did, they then tried to come back, they dig it back under the ground, they left it on top of the ground, and put blue paint around it. Now, the way they put the blue paint around it, nobody can cut the grass there unless they do a weed eater. I'm paying for all this stuff to be done, and to a ditch that is in the front of my house, but then, when I tried to clean it out, a police officer came by, he told me to notify you, because it's, whatever, the county property, they said it's county property, so ain't but so much I can do with it. But I am against that building project that is about to come up, because I am 70 years old, I might not look like it, but I was living in that area all my life, and for me to come and go and be afraid, I can't live like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.[1796.13] Thank you, Ms. Brown.[596.04][596.04](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak that didn't have the opportunity to sign up on the zoning map amendment? Come on forward and give us your name when you're up here.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I'm appalled of the development...
Name your name.
Sheila Jenkins Ward.
Thank you.
I'm appalled of the project. I don't live in the community, but it's right down from my parents' home and several of my friends. And I've been to several of the meetings, and I think about the impact of these developments that are coming in here. And again, I do address the concerns that we are putting so many houses. I see everywhere I live in Battery Point, and there are three different developments coming right around me. And I see the impact. And we saying we want affordable housing, but this project is not affordable for the residents that live here. It's not. And then we said the schools, Battery Creek, has 700 and I think 91 slots that's still available because I was at a meeting when that was addressed. And if we... If this project goes through, based on the pricing for the housing, that's not going to be affordable people that are going to move in that neighborhood. It's going to be people that are retired, that are coming from the north, who has the funds to be able to secure buying that home. So then, we lock out the same people we said we are here to serve and to make it affordable for them to have public housing or residence. The congestion in Beaufort, when I came back from New York, and I've looked at Boundary Street on several occasions and several different times of the day, and I see the impact. Jennings Road and the other road is a two-lane. One going in, one coming out. With the influx of new homeownership in that community, then across from Walmart, we have the new shopping center there. We have all the new homes that have come up right on 170. When you compile all of that together, that's going to make a big difference in our community. Secondly, we saw the impact of the flooding within the Broad River Road, the Castle Rock Road, and several other roads within our community. When we, as they said, take out those vegetation and those trees, where is the water going? And when this wonderful developer has left our community, and we start having the issues with septic tanks, we start having the issues with continual flooding in our community, are they going to be here? They're gone. Garden Oaks is a very example. It put up, I think it's probably over 300 apartments. The next thing we know, we saw the crimes started happening. I was the one, one of those person that went down to City Hall and had a conversation with them because I said, "Unless the developers put up cameras to monitor situations, unless the management structure put up some type of the programs to help the children with... That live and reside there, there's going to be a problem." And there has been a problem, a repeated problem. We, you, the community, is asking you to step up. Don't let the developers come in our communities and keep doing the same thing over and over and over again. We are tired of it. We don't want more development that's not going to enhance our communities. We don't want more development that when they finish and they're gone, we have more problems, infrastructures problems. We have more tax-paying problems. Let us face reality. And sometimes, when we face reality, we don't like what we see, but we have to address it.
Anyone else for public comment on the zoning map amendment? Okay.
I make a motion to extend pass eight.
Need to have a motion to extend.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Hold on. I need a second.
Second.
All right, second. All in favor to extend? Raise your hand. All right, thank you. The reason we have to do that, we have to end at eight, but we're going to extend. Go for it.
If you all come to Hilton Head, you'd see what all these wonderful people are talking about. My council member won't come even down or give me a call back or answer an email to come to see what has already happened in the Spanish Wells area. Everything they're saying is true. You continue to build up... There's a county drainage ditch between Oak Marsh and the atrocity they put next to us, which was the town's fault. I'll give them that. But the county let them have a closer run with the property to the drainage ditch. They didn't have the same setback. The town allowed it. The county allowed it instead of clearing out that drain or putting them on the other side. Everything they're saying is true.
I'm sorry, but this is on the zoning map amendment?
I know. That's what I'm getting to.
Let's say focus on that.
That's exactly what I'm getting to. I'm saying what they're saying is true with the zoning, Ms. Tabernick.
Yes.
What they're saying is true. It's happened in Hilton Head. Everything they are saying is true with the flooding. We just had that recent rainstorm before the absorption would happen in the neighborhood next to us. Now it's not happening. We just got flooded out. Again, my council member would not come out there and look at it. You would understand it more if you would come and see what's happening on Hilton Head. They're building the land up. It has taken away all the area for the water to run off into the marsh, and you are having a cement world. You guys are going to ruin Beaufort, just like they've ruined Hilton Head. Keep up with it.[1030.01][1030.01](APPLAUSE).
All right, thank you. Could I just have your name for the record?
Phil Smith.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? So hearing none, I will close public comment on the zoning map amendment. All right, any council members have points of discussion or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To move this forward, I move that we grant the request for rezoning for the following reasons. One, it is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive code and the purposes of the development code. Two, it is not in conflict with provisions of the development code or our Code of Ordinance. Three, it does address a demonstrated community need. Four, it is required by change conditions. Five, it is compatible with existing and proposed use of land surrounding this land. Six, it would not adversely affect nearby land. Seven, it would result in logical and orderly development patterns. Eight, it would not result in adverse impact on the natural environment. And nine, it would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities. Further, there will be conditions that the development agreement associated with this rezoning will not alter any district standards and that the additional workforce or affordable housing units be included, along with other incentives, to assist members of the public to afford to purchase houses in this development area.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to amend the motion.
All right, Mr. Dawson?
Need a second first. I'll second it.
Thank you.
He wants to amend the motion. Oh, we already... We already seconded the motion.
In the beginning for discussion, but now he's got the motion to move it forward, and that needs a second.
Okay, somebody want to second his... Mr. Passment?
Larry did.
Oh, Mr. McGowan. All right, now, Mr. Dawson wants to make an amendment.
All right, I move that we deny the request for the zoning map amendment for the following reasons. It is in conflict with the provision of the development code and our Code of Ordinance. It does not address a demonstrated need for the community, which they have spoken eloquently to that fact. It is not required by change conditions, and it would not... I'm sorry. It would result in adverse impact on the natural environment, water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetations, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment. And lastly, it would not result in a development that is adequately served by public facilities, such as the streets as far as the traffic issue that the people from the resident just spoke about, portable water sewer, stormwater management, solid waste collection, and disposal of schools, parks, police, fire, and emergency facilities for those reasons.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, if I may...
Remember, he's our parliamentarian.
And I just want to say, it seems like that's not so much an amendment to the motion. It seems like a secondary motion to that. So if we want to take it in order, since Joe made his first, we can take that, which would allow Mr. Dawson to vote no on that, and then if... Then we can move on to the secondary motion. I don't know how you all want to handle that, but it seems like it's too...
If Mr. Dawson wants to vote no on the original motion, that's literally the same thing he just said.
But it was phrased as an amendment to it, and I just want to clarify that.
It's not an amendment, Mr. Dawson.
It's a separate motion. Okay.
Okay, so any other discussion on the zoning map amendment?
We need to request that they withdraw the motion and the second.
Yes, would you request, please withdraw your motion, your amendment.
So that we can vote on the first?
Yeah. Just a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Dawson.
All right, I'll remove the...
The amendment. Thank you.
Consent from the second.
I'll take back the second then.
Okay, so any other discussion from council on this motion that Mr. Passment made and read?
Can I just say one thing? I believe it's appropriate. I live on Hilton Head. I represent them. And Mr. Smith, just so you know, you're on the radar. Oak Marsh is on the radar with Mr. Moore to be looked at for those issues that we talked about. So feel comfortable knowing that. Secondly, as long as I'm on this council, I listen to the people, and I think the people have spoken loudly. We've got to stop this stuff.[1355.64][1355.64](APPLAUSE).
Anyone else? Ms. Howard.
I am going to vote no to the zoning amendment. I think there are many concerns about the traffic that have not been addressed adequately. I read the traffic impact analysis several times. I know of the traffic firsthand over in that area and with all the other development that has already come forward, I think this would be a real issue, so I'm going to vote no for the zoning change.
Anyone else here to make a... Yes, Mr. Cunningham, go.
Thank you. Someone that has grown up here for 30-some years. Just one thing that we've been here for the last about hour and a half. People just ripping county council apart, and everybody sat here quietly this entire time, just letting everyone rip us. We're used to it. I'm used to it. I could do everything you want to do 99% of the time, and then one time I don't, you'll hate me. I've come to learn that. I'm used to it. It's fine at this point. With that said, I want to address a couple of things that were said that are go... This property in hand. We had people sit here time and time again, talk about... I'm going to use words. No bowling alley. I'll use that because I obviously run a bowling alley. No movie theater, no things to do. It's really hard to say those things when you also don't want the growth. No government official is going to go in and put in a movie theater or a bowling alley. We don't... We don't run businesses in the government. It's not our job. The citizens are going to go build that type of industry. They're the ones that's going to go build the store, the restaurant, the grocery store, whatever it might be. With that takes people. If that business is not going to make money, the business is not going to come. Now, I'm not saying I support the growth. I'm not saying I support the development, but I'm just saying, remember that when you guys yell at us time and time again about, "We want this here, we want this here," but at the same time, you come back and say, "Well, but we don't want the houses that come along with it." That's very... It's very counterproductive. I definitely waited an hour and a half to speak. I did not cut anybody off, nor would I ask for that same respect, especially when I'm supporting you right now. Just want to take that as a whole. People think about that sometimes. I want to see everything that's over in Hilton Head or Bluffton and Beaufort, and then being St. Helena, and so on and so on and so on, but we can't force people to do that. We can't force businesses to come here. We can't force this certain business to come here. That's a government overreach, which we got ridiculed earlier, saying that we were doing a government overreach. But I guarantee you, if I would have done something and I was not a government official, or if we had somebody's back when you thought we did something wrong, then you would say that's a government overreach too. Lose-lose situation. So with that said, we've been yelled at all day about it, but that's neither here nor there. I'll just say, just remember both sides of that aisle. Sometimes, can't have your cake and eat it too. If you don't want the houses, I'm with you. I don't either. I have not voted yes on any upzoning except once since I've been in county council in five years, and that was to go from one house to switch it to commercials so they could do offices on the space instead of a house. That's the only one. So I'm with you, but just realize what comes with that. The businesses aren't going to come. The job creation is not going to come. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Anyone else, council?
Call the question.
Okay, I would like Mr. Passment to reiterate the final part of that motion because it's not in the document.
The development agreement associated with this rezoning will not alter any district standards and that the additional workforce or affordable housing units be included, along with other incentives, to assist members of the public to afford to purchase houses in the development area.
All right, so we call the question. If you would do a roll call vote, please. This is on the zoning map amendment.
Councilmember Passment?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair Tabernick?
No.
Chair Howard?
No.
Now you should open the floor for a new motion.
Open the floor.
Dawson can renew his motion.
Yeah, Mr. Dawson, do you want to reframe your motion, make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, go.
Madam Chair, I move that we deny the zoning map amendment request for the following reasons. It is in conflict with the provisions of the development agreement code and our Code of Ordinance. It does not address a demonstrated need for the community. It's not required by change conditions. It would result in adverse impact on the natural environment, water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetations, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment. It would not result in a development that is adequately served by public facilities, such as streets, portable water, sewer, stormwater management, solid waste collection and disposal, schools, parks, police, fire, emergency medical facilities.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made by Mr. Dawson, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Any further discussion on this motion?
I have a question. Is this dealing with a matter we've just settled?
Yes, I thought it was, but he said he can make the motion.
This makes very clear the action of council rather than just having a failed motion to approve something. This may preclude having an appeal on this issue. That's our preferred course of action on motions that fail going forward when it deals with planning and zoning.
That's fine, thank you. I just wanted to be sure we were... We understood what we were voting on. Okay, thank you.
Any further comment on council?
And what's the vote that we're seeking, yes or no?
Disapprove zoning map amendment.
Disapprove.
To disapprove, disapprove.
I'm sorry.
A yes as a disapprove. A no would mean you would want...
A yes isn't as a disapprove, a no would mean you would want it to move forward.
Yeah, does everybody understand, a yes means you are denying the zoning map amendment, a no means you're going to let it go forward. All right, let's do a roll call again, please.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Passment?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes.
So, Mr. Halbert, the next ordinance becomes a moot point.
No, we have to still look through it.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-five slash forty-three, ordinance to approve a development agreement for Ramsey Farms located at ninety-eight Jennings Road, R one hundred zero two eight zero 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 two six four and four zeros, between Pulte Home Company LLC, a Michigan limited liability company authorized to conduct business in South Carolina and the county of Beaufort, South Carolina pursuant to section six dash thirty-one dash thirty of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six as amended.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move, I move that we deny the development agreement for the Ramsey Road Farms project located at ninety-eight Jennings Road.
If I may interject for a moment, this is still marked as a public hearing, I don't know if we still have.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, we need a second first.
I just wanted to make sure where you're.
Yeah, it is public hearing, so Mr. Dawson made the motion.
I'll second his motion.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to the developer first.
Again, Rob Merrick, you got the, Sarah, do you got the present? I'm Rob Merrick with Pulte Homes, want to start by saying, thank you, we've heard you loud and clear. There are a few things that I want to address as we move, move through this. Pulte Homes has been a builder in this community for twenty-plus years. We've put thousands of families in homes throughout this community, whether you're their entry level to retirees. We talk about being members of the community, I live in Beaufort County, I live right up the road in, and Chair Howard's district, I've been a member of this community for twenty-three years. We also represent seventy-five-plus employees in this area, that doesn't, you know, talk through the many companies that support the housing industry in this area. So to say that we do not care is an absolute false statement, and you will see that through this development agreement. Let's also talk to the traffic study. We keep having questions regarding the traffic study, the traffic study was provided by the Beaufort County. Y'all provided the nine criteria, the nine intersections that were studied through this. Those nine intersections is, was also studied through Kimberly-Horn and was accepted, the review and study was accepted by the South Carolina Department of Transportation. So we have Kimberly-Horn here, that can also speak to the study, again, that was presented by Beaufort County that we completed with minimal, minimal impacts. So to say that we, we're not following the study, you're not following your own study that was completed. Stormwater, every neighborhood, engineers here, stormwater has to remain on site, best practices for stormwater management, so every site is designed to be able to hold stormwater on that site to be able to support the community. Infill, if you looked at the project that we originally had up here, let me just go through a couple of quick things here so you could see it, oh, let me go back one. Right here, see that star? We're dead center infill, dead center infill. You talk about having infill projects that work within the walkability within the, to support the community, that keep the roads, keep all the, if you look at that, within ten minutes, you're at the military installations, fifteen minutes, you're outside all the way to Well Branch and past it. So to say you want, you want growth, we're bringing you that growth. Northern Beaufort County is the, is the corridor for the growth, and we're providing that for you. We heard stories, talking about walkability to the schools. Next one, right here, you see that blue dot right in the middle? That's the five-minute and ten-minute walkability to schools, dead center, right in the middle of that. So everything that we're providing you are facts of the overall development. So let's get into the development agreement. As we've worked hard, and we've listened, and Pulte has done everything that has been requested by us, by the multiple hearings that we've had, we've heard you loud and clear, let me get to the screen real quick here. Oh, by the way, let me go back to that one, the Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer, we have a letter that we could provide you, that was provided today to support the overall infrastructure of the whole community, two hundred and forty-four units. The development agreement, in alignment with the Beaufort County's, I'm sorry, we have, we have heard you loud and clear, and we recognize the critical role workforce housing plays in sustaining Beaufort County's economic vitality, particularly tourism, military, healthcare, and service sectors. The twenty forty comprehensive plan clearly identifies, like many other things that we've noted tonight throughout this entire project, clearly identifies the need to actively support housing for essential personnel such as teachers, nurses, and public safety workers. However, the ability to meet the need is currently hindered by regulatory barriers including restrictive zoning, insufficient development incentives, and persistent anti-growth sentiment. This agreement presents an opportunity to align with the county's strategic goals by promoting mixed-use transit accessible and a hundred percent workforce housing development that addresses these challenges. You've asked for it over and over and over again, and we're providing a hundred percent workforce housing development that directly addresses these challenges. I urge council to consider this, just not as a land use decision, but as a strategic investment in the county's long-term resilience and equity. In alignment with the county's comprehensive plan and the intent of place-type overlay, we have thoroughly designed our land use plan to accommodate two hundred and forty-four single-family detached units that promote affordable and workforce housing. While we did not request additional density bonuses as outlined in the twenty-four action plan, we instead remain consistent with the PTO framework by working with the prescribed three units per acre, ensuring compatibility with the surrounding context and the community vision. The development supports the plan's strategic goals by locating housing near employment centers, schools, transit routes, and by fostering walkable, mixed-income neighborhoods. Importantly, we're eager to collaborate with the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust to ensure long-term affordability and regional coordination, fulfilling the county's objective outlined in the Strategy Eight Three in your action plan. This partnership and planning approach demonstrates our commitment to equitable, resilient growth, and reflects the county's priorities for sustainable workforce housing development. Again, you asked for it over and over, and you've provided action plans, and we're implementing those action plans for you, we just need your support to follow through. I want to reiterate that this development represents a full commitment to Beaufort County's housing goals, providing a hundred percent workforce housing across all two hundred and forty-four single-family detached units. This is not a partial effort or a token inclusion, it is a comprehensive, place-based solution that directly supports our teachers, nurses, public safety workers, and other essential Moreover, this project delivers a tangible community benefit valued at approximately two-point-five million dollars back to the community for the workforce and affordable aspect. This is reinforcing our dedication to equity, resilience, and responsible growth. Through thoughtful land use and planning, collaboration with Beaufort Jasper, alignment with the strategic actions outlined in the comprehensive plan, we are not only meeting a critical need, we are setting a precedence for how Beaufort County can grow inclusively and sustainably. So in alignment with the goals outlined in the twenty forty action plan and a recognition of Pulte's significant investment into Beaufort County workforce housing, we respectfully request your approval to proceed with our development agreement. This initiative directly supports the county's commitment to eliminating development barriers, expanding housing opportunities, fostering sustainable and inclusive growth. Our partnership is shared a vision for resilient, equitable, and vibrant community, and we look forward to continuing the collaboration and delivering a long, lasting partnership with the Beaufort County residents.
Every time I see Mr. Halbert pop up, I have to stop. Okay, do you have anyone else that wants to speak in the public hearing, Mr. Merrick?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Ackerman with Carolina Engineering, I'm a resident here in Beaufort, and I've been an engineer here for close to thirty years. Time flies when you're having fun. In regards to stormwater, what Rob or Mr. Merrick was talking about, Beaufort County has a solo code stormwater manual, I'm sure you guys are familiar with it, it's probably the most stringent stormwater manual of any district or state I've ever worked in. All of the drainage from this project would be captured and stored or infiltrated into the ground, we would also be designing it to meet those requirements, that means stormwater attenuation up to the hundred-year design storm. That's, I think it's fourteen inches of rain in twenty-four hours. So, are stormwater impacting anything downstream? That's not going to occur with this design, it just won't happen. If you look at the site development plan that Josh Diller has created for the project, you'll see natural resource, open space areas, you'll see stormwater management areas and things like that. And if you guys have any other questions on stormwater, I'll be glad to address them.
Anyone else? Okay.
Again, we just want to make sure we've clearly spoken to the community and the residents, we understand that people don't like growth, they don't, but it is inevitable, it is inevitable, and it is responsible by the Beaufort County Council to implement a plan that y'all have asked for, and that you created, and that you approved. So again, we request that you approve the development agreement, that we can continue to move forward.
So, any more for public hearing for your, your comments, Mr. Merrick? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone from the audience, I do have the same people, well, I had Joyce Gibbs, Barbara Childs, Carol Dore, Louise Brown, they asked to speak on the development agreement too. If you have something different to say, we've already spoken on the zoning map amendment. So, Ms. Gibbs, you signed up to speak about number three as well. The development agreement, not zoning map, okay.
To the development agreement, we do not just need schools, I mean, teachers, firefighters, nurses. We're here to meet the needs of everybody in the community. We can't cherry pick, we all live in our community. This development agreement that he is referring to, that the twenty forty plan, the request that you made, you put out there that he is meeting, and maybe he does meet it, we're not saying that he doesn't meet it, we're saying that there are twenty other people that has already met it. You see what I'm saying? With so many houses coming up in our neighborhood, in our community already, we're not going to miss out on two hundred and forty-four more houses. So we shouldn't be denied anything because we don't want additional houses in that particular area. We have, and I've given you pictures previously, with all the development that is coming in our area, we're, we're going to be just fine without that particular one. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Barbara Childs, did you want to speak on the development agreement? Yes.
Yes, no.
All right. Carol Dore, did you want to speak on the development agreement?
I really don't have much to add, except I do know this company is the third-largest building company in the United States, so they might be in this area, but they are looking to go all over the world, and if you look ninety-five, it's come right up, and I'm sorry, that's more the zoning. But we talk about things about, we talked again about the water, these people don't live there, the ones that have talked live there. When it rains, we can't cut our grass for about a week because the ground is already mushy. So when I say that water was running across Jennings Road, when they put that concrete down, there won't be any place for that to go, and it will just create another problem and another situation that will have to be addressed further down the road, because it's not going to go away by itself. So just think about what, what we're giving up for the little that we're getting, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Louise Brown, did you want to speak on the development agreement, hon? Come on up.
Only thing I have to add with that, it's that they are saying that it's low-income apartment, okay, these apartments that are coming here, that are already here, I have a granddaughter, she has applied for apartment, every place that she went, she got turned down. You know why? They said that she's single. What's the difference between me having one child and she not having any? She still need a place to stay. She has been turned down for much before apartments because she don't have a child. So I, I don't, still don't agree with another apartment coming.
These are homes, not apartments, okay. Mr. Merrick, did you have something else you wanted to say? You were popping up. Oh, is there anybody else from the public first? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, you raise your hand first, come on up.
Yeah, they're both Mr. Smith.
Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
First off, let me start by saying, I wasn't going to really say much, because the committee spoke very well, but, you know, when this developer gets up here and keeps saying, you know, y'all and we, and, you know, the mentality of it is that county council owes them something, because there was a conversation. I don't know whether it was a backroom conversation or the conversation, but the conversation up ahead hand is that the community has been speaking, and the community says spoken loud and clearly said that they don't want it. And if county council have an agreement that I understand that, saying that they've wanted, he keeps saying, you and we and y'all, who is we? We the people have spoken and said that, listen, they want to be able to cut their grass, they want the crime to stop. We the people have said, listen, we, we don't want to be stuck in our homes because we're flooded. We the people don't always know man-made water to the water table, these are things that we the people don't know. So, when you get up here and you speak arrogantly, and, and, and saying that, you know, you want this deal to come across, it doesn't help, because we the people are from here, we've born here, and we're trying to survive here. And what the last speaker was saying is that, listen, if her daughter then applies to these apartment complexes, and she can't get in because she doesn't make enough, then what you think is going, what's going to happen when she apply to live close to her? what you think is what's going to happen when she apply to live close to her mama and she can't afford one of those homes? She can't, she damn sure won't be able to live close there. So I just want to put that out, and you say we and who? Listen. Listen to the people. And I'm in with that. I ain't going to be lying before you. That's what I'm saying. Listen to the people. Because when you make those, when y'all make those and talk to those different, whoever y'all are talking to and say that they're asking for it, they don't have the final word. They still have to have 11 votes right here, either approve it or disapprove it. So stop coming up and saying, trying to bully and saying we and y'all, and y'all ask for it. My baby asks for candy sometimes. I may tell him no. I may tell her no. Because you ask, not you don't always get.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Grant, did you want to speak? Come on up. Give everyone your name.
Hey, I'm Grant McClure. I work for the Coastal Conservation League. I also live in the city of Beaufort. I just wanted to speak to the development agreement process generally. Development agreements can be difficult for councils to manage because as time goes by, the council may wish to make changes, like updating their stormwater ordinance. And it's extremely difficult to amend these development agreements because both parties have to agree to do it. And so just wanted to remind you of that and that it can potentially tie the hands of future councils as we learn more in the future and want to update our ordinances, those rights get vested in those development agreements. Additionally, you know, I don't necessarily see this as infill development. I think that area is pretty rural. Understand that there's a school there, and that it is pretty close to the school, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's a safe walk, that there's infrastructure there to walk. And so just because it's in close proximity, I wouldn't necessarily consider it a walkable area. And one other thing is that, you know, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought here, but yeah, we just ask that the council hold strong. And I was going to ask, I was going to pose the question, is it even possible to move forward the development agreement without the zoning map amendment? And that may be a legal question, but just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
I'm glad to see a young person your age loses their train of thought. Not just those of us. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on the development agreements? Okay. We're going to fight for it, but it's okay.
Fight for what?
Nothing. Go ahead.
Put the microphone down.
Yeah. There's a couple of things in this. I could put a dot on my house in Hilton Head and say I'm within five-minute walk to Fuske, but I'd have to walk on water. And I can't do that. And it's the same thing if these kids can't get to a school, it's, you know, that distance away, if they've got to walk down a highway or walk somewhere else, it doesn't work. So you could put that dot on a map, just like he just said, and you're not going to get anywhere close to it. Second, they've got a stormwater report that comes out that says it's all containable. But what if it affects everything else around them because of the developments that's there, which we've seen on Hilton Head over and over and over again? Every time there's a development put up, we get flooded, worse and worse and worse every time. If you do something like this and you do approve it, get bonds from these guys. Make them put up bonds to take care of something that comes in the future. Don't you just give them carte blanche to develop. Make them put an investment into the community for the future, so if there is something that comes up and a neighborhood gets flooded, they have to take care of it with that bond. It has to be held for maybe 10 or 20 years. Whatever you all want to do, I know that might make it a little cumbersome on these gentlemen, but it also protects the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrick, you're up.
Mr. Brown.
Well, Mr. Merrick's been hopping up three times.
Well, thank you for the feedback from the community. There's a couple of things that, you know, we want to reiterate. One, the aspects of the things that we provided tonight were in response to the public comment. Affordability, workforce housing, not only from the public comment throughout these times that we've been up here, as well as the council itself. You know, we can only speak enough to the stormwater, the traffic study, all those things. We've got the facts to prove everything behind that. We got the facts that Polte has been a great builder in this area, and we continue to be that. We have the facts that we are also members of this community, that we live in this area, and we want to be able to support this community. I was a military veteran. I understand when it comes to buy your first home using your VA loan and getting into that. So we have answered to all those things. One of the things that talked about, these brought up to the fact of bullying or this and that, behind doors, no. Everything is transparent. We've been transparent from the beginning. And the other thing that we're in, same as y'all, the other thing that we are utilizing as a builder and a developer in this community is the comprehensive plan. We deny things based on the comprehensive plan. We move things forward on the comprehensive plan. Our roadmap as a builder in this community is based on the growth corridor and the comprehensive plan. That's what we use. That is my guiding book to sit down and say, hey, county, where are we going? This is what you're saying? These are the rules? Let's play, let's go, and then let's go in that direction. And that's what we're utilizing. Ramsey Farms is the front gate to the northern Beaufort County growth corridor. It is right there. That's the start of the, you jump over Ramsey, now you're doughnut-holing. You want growth further out? You're doughnut-holing sections. So this is, this is the ideal location for that initial growth into northern Beaufort County. And everything from the school to housing, the support, is there to be able to support this project.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you want to speak?
My colleague here told me to sit down and share.
Well, you're going to speak on the development agreement?
Yes. On the development agreement, I do not, we've had this discussion among ourselves. How can you have the development agreement as the first step when you don't have zoning, you don't have approval, you don't have the other changes compatible with the development agreement? It's just doesn't, it seems odd to me. I'm not an attorney, but how can you have an agreement, give someone an agreement when they don't have approval or the zoning hasn't been changed? And you probably know what I'm referring to. Thank you.
Anyone else before I close the public hearing, so we don't have to be sleeping here tonight? Okay, seeing nothing else, I will close the public hearing, and I turn to council. Any comments on the motion? Yes?
Mr. Dawson's got the criteria to consider.
Okay. Mr. Dawson, you want to talk, Mr. Cunningham has it?
Ma'am, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
One of the things he is saying is true. We do put out a comprehensive plan. And he is right. That is the first step of that next quarter. All these facts are true. But it also doesn't say when we have to approve it or when we should approve it. That's where council has to come in and make a decision. Is it time now? Is it time later? The statement, we've said it before, eventually somebody's going to try again. It might be Polte, it might be somebody else. I guarantee you somebody will try again, just like Cherry Farms has been tried multiple times, and I hear it in Bluffton. Every three months, somebody else comes up on the same piece of property. There's a reason for that. But with that said, to answer the question, that's why they're on the same agenda, why you would have a zoning map amendment at the same time as a development agreement. But you would have to put it in development agreement that says it's only approved if the zoning is approved. Zoning's not approved, it's null and void. With that other thing, though, I told you, we've been sitting here for an hour and a half getting yelled at. We discussed with people about a development agreement, and then you guys accuse us of doing backdoor deals. Somebody said to do bonds, but if we go out there and say a bond, you guys are going to say we did a backdoor deal. But yet, people clap for somebody when they say you should hold them accountable and make them do a bond, which would be a development agreement, which you say you don't want us to do. So that's why I just say sometimes these things are very counterproductive. It's hard to be in this position and make the decision, yea or nay, to talk about these things. But I just encourage people to continue to stay involved. I'm glad everybody came out here. I appreciate you guys staying late. I'm here for it. I love what I do. Good feedback, always, whether you agree or disagree, it's always nice to have the community involved. So if there's nothing else people are excited for, I'm excited that we had a filled room because that's how you know the community is actually engaged and paying attention to what's going on, and that's one of the most important things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilman before Mr. Dawson reads the criteria? Mr. Lawson?
No, I just want to say that, you know, I obviously represent Bluffton, and we've seen Bluffton grow and things happen there. A lot of those development agreements were actually done by the town of Bluffton as opposed to the county. When you look at the size of Bluffton that's there now, Mr. Smith, you mentioned Hilton Head. I lived in Hilton Head for six years before moving to Bluffton and have seen that grow there and see the issues that we have. And I think we're at the point now where people are saying to slow things down, to take a breath, but realize, too, this is a double-edged sword. Anytime we start turning down properties for development, I think that the numbers they're asking for were a whole lot more than what they should have been, you know, 10 times more than what was proposed for that property, what was actually allowed through the zoning. So when you do that, though, the people that live in that area, your property values are not going to increase as fast as you think they should because whenever the development doesn't happen. So again, I'm not promoting it. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just telling that there is a push and a pull, a pro and a con, that happens whenever you either don't develop or do develop. And there's benefits to both those sides, and there's negatives for both those sides. So just remember, you know, what you ask for, what you want, again, there's things that happen, and there are consequences that happen that are around there. So that's all that I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Bartholomew?
I'm going to keep it brief. You know, I voted to negotiate for the development agreement. I think these are going to be the smart land-use tool moving forward as this community continues to grow. But my concern with this is the density is just, it was just too much density for the time right now. You know, maybe we can get there. I do appreciate Polte coming to the table and trying to be a good partner here. But like I said, the density was just too much for me right now. Looking over my notes that I have about it, we're just too far off, I think. So thanks.
Any other council member on this topic? Well, Mr. Dawson, would you read your criteria, please, to support your motion?
Before I read the criteria, let me say to the community and those who spoke on behalf of the community, I thank you all for coming out tonight and speaking up on behalf of your community, what your wishes and what your desires are. I would say to all of my council constituents, let us be mindful that the planning, this development plan came before the planning commission, and they voted, it wasn't unanimously, but the majority of them, the planning commission voted it down. And so now it's before us, and we're taking our final vote. So I, Madam Chair, I move that we deny the request for the development agreement for the following reasons. It is in conflict with the provisions of the Development Code and our Code of Ordinances. It does not address a demonstrated need for the community. It is not required by changed conditions. And it would result in adverse impact on the natural environment, such as water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetations, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment. And lastly, it would not result in a development that is adequately served by public facilities such as streets, portable water, sewer, stormwater management, solid waste collection, and disposals, schools, parks, police, fire, and emergency medical facilities. That's my.
Thank you. And we already had a second.
You need a second.
I need a second for this one. Second it. Ms. Brown, seconded it.
If I could just clarify.
Yes.
The matter that went before the planning commission was the zoning map amendment, not the development agreement.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Let's do a roll call vote. You knew I was going to say that. Yep.
What are we voting on? Yes?
We're voting on, would you restate your motion, please?
Motion to deny.
To deny.
Yes, to deny.
Deny the development agreement.
Or the criteria listed. The reasons, the criteria listed.
Here is criteria. Yeah. Go.
I do have one question about that. When listing their criteria, what if all the things listed do not actually apply?
Disagree. You can move to amend to remove something.
Which one does not apply?
Schools and stormwater.
Schools, yeah, for sure.
Is there a motion to amend to remove that?
Just curious how it would work.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the ordinances going to the resolutions. Ms. Howard?
Yes. A is 2025/49, a resolution to accept and to appropriate funds from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund, or called SCORF.
Madam Chair, if we may, give the room a moment to clear out.
We need.
We'll give them as many minutes.
A few more minutes.
Let me coordinate what's the difference.
I think there's a way to add motions in there.
I just know people watching at home might be able to hear.
No, it's fine.
Okay, now that it's quieted down, resolution 2025/49, a resolution to accept and to appropriate funds from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund, or acronym SCORF.
So moved, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Councilman Cunningham, a second by Councilman Larson. Discussion?
It's getting late.
No discussion? All right. All in favor of this motion signify by raising your hand, and that is unanimous. All right. Resolution 202550, a resolution establishing a policy that restricts and defines allowable uses of Beaufort County Council's Economic Development Site and Job Funds, which are allocated annually for use by the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
A motion?
I have a motion by Ms. Councilwoman Brown. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Bartholomew. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands? Okay. And that is unanimous.
No, I vote no.
Okay. Larry voted, one vote no.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. C is 202551, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Low Country Regional Transit Authority, LRTA, for administrative support for DeFuske Island Ferry qualified discount rider passes for the fiscal year 26th. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. One, Councilman Cunningham, no. All right. Resolution 202552, a resolution to accept a South Carolina Aviation Commission grant for the Hilton Head Airport Administration Building conceptual. This is for the design.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Cunningham, a second by Councilman Reitz. Hearing no discussion. All in favor by show of hands? Is that unanimous? Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. Last is E, approval of a contract award for RFP 052024, Computer-Assisted Math Appraisal Tax System Software for Beaufort County to the Company Harris Govern. Do I have a motion to approve that contract award?
A motion?
I'll second.
I think we're falling asleep here.
A second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Dawson. I think there is some discussion. Any discussion, please?
Well, I would refer people to the item that was sent to us by email, but maybe Ms. Harriet or Mr. Moore would like to speak, or Mr. Everson would like or Mr. Evanson would like to speak on this. We were given more detail.
Staff will be coming to speak.
Okay. Whoever wants to come forward. Mr. Thomas?
Everybody's coming.
Oh, everybody. Okay.
I know this is a very touchy situation, but I did, hopefully, everybody got a chance on council to review the email that I sent that had a memorandum that just covered the timeline of the process for the evaluation, the evaluation committee. It covered the facts that basically we are selecting and recommending selecting Harris Govern as the best solution. All three companies that were identified as the top three, we ranked it down to the top two. Then after the interviews and demos, the evaluation committee ranked Harris the number one, which follows the county code. So with that said, some of your questions, I do have the IT director here, Dan Morgan, can talk a little bit about the technical side of the fence. But we stay with our recommendation to move forward to award the contract to Harris.
Okay, do we have questions?
Yes, ma'am, I do have some questions.
Councilman Bartholomew?
Were all parties that are going to be using this involved in every single round of scoring?
Yes, sir.
I heard a yes and a no.
No. All of the evaluation committee members were involved in all the ratings.
So every single agency or department was involved in every round?
Yes, sir.
The assessors, treasurer, the auditor.
That is correct.
And our IT department.
That is correct.
And every single round?
Yes, sir.
Because I know I saw one, the last round, it looked like the treasurer's office scored 0-0. So do they participate, or did they?
They rated zero. They decided not to vote. And that is their right. That is her right.
Other questions? No one?
I have one more. How many other counties are using this particular software?
Dan, you want to answer that, please? Thank you. It's changing.
So currently, the CAMA portion, which is the assessment, is live currently in Richland, Dorchester, and Pickens County. And in the timeline, it would take a year for implementation for Beaufort County in that. By the time they are completed, the personal property and the billing and collections modules will be live in, that would be Ori County, Florence County, and Abbeville County.
So we're not talking the beta version here?
No, they'll be live in those counties. It's currently live, the CAMA, and they will be live in the other two modules by the time we start trying to do our implementation of those modules.
Currently, it's only one.
Correct. For CAMA, for the CAMA modules.
Have another question?
Yeah, $3 million essentially phased in over the next, what, three to five years? I just, why are we rushing into this? It seems like it's a rushed-type situation rather than waiting to see what the implementation is with the other counties and agent on that front.
I don't really think it's a rush. It's just I know we have the assessor's office is going to go through a new, what you call it, assessment.
Reassessment.
And so it takes 18 months regardless of who we picked to get this software working properly. So that's, I guess that's the rush, is let's go ahead and award it to a company, one company that can actually provide what we're asking for.
Is there any county that's using it in all phases that we plan to use it on? We'd be the first county to use it in every department.
Oh, they'll be live. The other ones will be live before we even start.
What I'm saying currently, today, is there any county that's using all of them? Right now, you're saying it will be live when we start, but I'm saying is we're about to pick this company. Currently, nobody is live using it in all departments that we plan on using it.
For all three modules. Correct. Yeah. So the CAMA is the one that we're going with. It's gonna take a year for them to get through that process. In that timeframe, they'll be live in the other three modules, which allow the two offices, auditors and treasurers, to be able to review those and make any customizable solutions that they need for their needs at that time.
Can I answer your question?
I have another question.
Okay, Councilman?
I have another question. So Ebony, so you'll be the first one to come online, and you're gonna do reassessment. What happens if we keep the same software we have?
The current software we have is the 20-year-old, almost 20-year-old product. There are, because of legislation changes, because of the dynamics of our county, this software is not being supported anymore. So we can implement a CAMA, I mean, we're gonna be good, great at whatever we use. However, what we're using is outdated product. There's some, we just have some legislative changes that we're trying to figure out how we're gonna, if they get passed, how we're gonna make it work on the CAMA side of it. With regards to the product that we have with the CAMA side, we have some professionals within our department that's been here at the very beginning, myself included, but they've actually handheld this piece that we have. And the gentleman that does have that experience has 35 years in this county. He can retire tomorrow. And so if he does, all that goes with him, and now we have a software that, we're the only ones besides Charleston using the CAMA side of it. Other counties have abandoned, or they have an older version of it. So to answer your question, it's a dying product. The product is pretty much, I mean, it's obsolete. So we need something new. Regardless of what we go to, we have to move forward.
Any other questions? I think we'll take a roll call vote. Yes. Come up. Please come up. Okay. So that it will be on television, and everyone can hear you.
Tenure Ward Deputy Treasurer, the question was asked if all the departments voted on all the rounds, and I was asking for clarification on the IT department on the final round, if they actually voted, and if we got a copy of the score.
It's included in the packet.
Okay.
Okay.
They voted. I'm looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilman?
The only question I've got is, obviously, it came down to three different companies. How much of a cost difference was between the second and third company that? Very similar, and it basically came down to the top two, which was Catalyst and Harris Govern. Very similar in price, a couple hundred thousand dollars in closeness. Then we negotiated, we were the final best and final offer with Harris and narrowed it down even lower than the initial pricing that we're given. And that's basically how the process runs. You rank, Harris was ranked number one. You know what your budget is. You negotiate. As low as you can go and get a good product.
Okay. We're ready for a vote? Start with Ms. Brown?
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes, A2.
Okay, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.